How you doing, Brian?
How's it going?
Hey, Richard, Brian.
Oh, hi, Cardi.
So I enabled the waiting room for this time because I guess we have closed session or you guys have closed session.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Neil Armstrong?
Yeah. Anniversary of the moon landing yesterday.
Yeah, very good guys.
Yeah, Zoom works pretty good from outer space.
It's a clear picture. Saturday I was taken to the 60s. That's pretty nice.
Actually, I just looked today at this. I don't know if you've heard of deep fakes. They're essentially videos of people that aren't real, but they look like they're real. This group did one of Nixon and he gave the speech that he would have given if Apollo 13 wasn't successful.
Oh, geez.
And it's even in the quality from then, but it looks like, it looks legitimate. Looks like an actual speech Nixon gave, but it is just the sort of technology we can do these days to just even make up video.
Did they get a hold of one of his actual written speeches? Probably like it was like, okay, that he had his drafters make in case the moon mission wasn't successful?
Yeah, I'm sure you need a certain amount of data to be able to do it. And I'm guessing they did use the speech he gave after it was, of course, successful. But yeah, just Google it. Probably Nixon and deep fake and you'll find it. It was pretty incredible. It's just like a they give a little intro on it. The whole group's just kind of showing how easy it would be to kind of spread disinformation that way. And just how, how easy it is essentially. And it's pretty neat. Sarah, Randy, how you two doing?
Good.
Hi, Sarah.
Hello.
Hi, Randy. Hi, Alki. Hi, Joes.
Cardi? I'm going to make you a host today because I, I will kick everyone off when we go into closed session, but I'm not going to be there for closed session or afterwards. Sure. So then if you want to just allow everyone back in at that point, that would work.
Yeah, and actually, I think I read Zoom. I think it was sometime in September is going to require either a password or the waiting room. So of course we do the waiting room then. So I think you'll have a choice at that point then. You're taking care of it though right now, right, Brian? Because there's some people waiting.
Hi, good evening, morning.
Hello.
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 Hey.
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Hi. Everybody's okay. Two minutes remaining.
Cardi, you have a different background. You're on, you're on the moon.
Hi, Harvey. Yes, not out in the middle of Granchit today.
No, you're not.
Well, man, you did laugh. Appreciate you being, you know, up there on the moon. You're having time. It's now seven o'clock. I call an order. The East Point City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We will start the invocation by Mayor Potem, Sarah Lucido, followed by our pleasure and allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Dear God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given this community. We, we ask for your help for both our city leaders and our residents. Help us to remain vigilant to our work and focus on our tasks. The challenges of this pandemic remain with us. The challenges of seeking justice remain with us. Let us not to forget these callings. Let us not fall into complacency with the passing of time. Help us to work together with one another to create a community that works for all of our citizens. A community that is safe from disease, a community that is safe from crime, a place that we can remain to be proud to call our home. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Our pleasure and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Potem. You always say the best prayers. Can we get roll call, please, Mr. Fairbrother?
Mayor Owens.
Here.
Councilperson Baker.
Here.
Councilperson Curly.
Here.
Councilperson DeMonaco.
Here.
Councilperson Lucido.
Here.
Thank you. Can we get approval of the agenda, please? A motion?
Madam Mayor, I had one item maybe to bring up. I'm trying to remember when we discussed it, but we were talking about doing a joint city council planning commission meeting. And I had my calendar for Thursday, July 30th on Zoom. I don't recall if we did actually motion for that or not, but I figured we could at least discuss that. I don't know if anyone else remembers that.
I don't remember that either. You want to add that?
Um, sure. Yeah, let's at least discuss that. I think the planning commission had, um, I believe the planning commission voted to ask us, and I don't recall where we left it at that point. So yeah, I'll just motion to add a joint city council planning commission meeting to the agenda.
Yeah, I'll support that. I remember that conversation. Also do it.
Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing I believe too, we were going to add underneath probably scheduled hearings. Mr. Walby still speaking this evening?
Hey there, Mr. Walby. Mayor Walby?
I am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Walby from St. Clair Shores. He is here. So add that as well. Okay. Yeah, in addition of the new business with the joint planning commission and city council and also in addition to the scheduled hearings by Mayor Kim Walby from St. Clair Shores speaking on SMDA, SMA DA, SEMDA. So can I get, I have a motion. Can I get support on that, please?
Who, was that my motion?
Yeah, it was your motion. I didn't need support on it.
I can support that motion.
Okay, thank you. Motion is supported. Please call the row.
All right. Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we are at the hearing of the public. And for those who don't know, sometimes we have new people join us in Zoom and also in our council meetings when we come back. Hearing of the public is where we have our constituents voice the issues and opinions and ideas to the council on city matters. We give you three minutes and additional three minutes before the end of our meeting. We ask you to address all of council as a whole and to be respectful. And please, who is up for the hearing of the public is open. Can we have the first person speak, please? And please state your name and if you're a resident or not, if you'd like to also add your address. Mr. Fairbrother?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak.
Yes.
Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening. Hope everyone is enjoying the great weather today. Just wanted to make an observation. It's always good to see the city being promoted in a positive way with regards to the groundbreaking last week. However, I was disappointed not seeing some of the people who were involved in that project coming to pass. Since it had been in the works for almost four years. And I think that I don't know if it was an oversight on whose part, but I think it would have been particularly encouraging to see both old and new participating in that event. I think that's a matter of showing unity and honoring those who came before as well as those that are there now. So I hope in the future that when things like that happen, especially with events that occur with other people, that they are also included in that. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rayford. That's a good point. Thank you so much. Also, do we have anyone else, please?
Madam Mayor, there is nothing, no other comments in the chat box, which is open, and no other hands are raised at this moment.
Excuse me, I forgot to unmute myself. Madam Mayor and the council, I thank you for this opportunity. I am currently a resident here in East Point.
And I'm, I'm, uh, give me one second, ma'am. For those who do not, Mr. Fairbrother, can you make sure, because I know you're the administrator over the Zoom, can you let people know how they can raise their hand and sign in? Some people don't, are new to Zoom. And then we're gonna let you speak, ma'am. You haven't used any time. I want to just make sure people know how to actually, you know, tune in and raise their hand. I'm Mr. Fairbrother.
Sure. So anyone who would like to speak, if you could just go to the participants box and usually if you hover over your name, you can click raise hand and/or lower hand. So for instance, I just lowered Ms. Mary Hall Rayford's hand. But otherwise you can just click raise hand. Now we can see, you did, you did do it just now there, Addie. So so thank you very much.
Thank you. This is my first time and I appreciate attention to both the mayor and the council. I'm living here at, in East Point. I live on Stricker Street. And I was a renter and I went on and I bought the property. But I'm having problems with the workers. They come and mess up your property. And then when you ask them to come back, you either too late, it wasn't them, or I have to go through numerous people. I know numbers by heart now and
Those who just chimed in, can you please put your speaker on mute while other people are talking until it's your time to talk, please? Those who just chimed in, please put your phone, I mean, if you're on your phone or your laptop, put it on mute because we can hear the background. Ms. Richardson, when are you done? I'm sorry about that.
Okay, yes, that was, what was what I was bringing up. I have called a number of times and I just seem to get passed around. And I don't know what else to do. I guess if I let you know, they, one year they came through the back, well, we don't, well, they came through the backyard, took our fences down and was doing some work. And then they came back, put the fence and my yard settled. So it's, I can't walk in it. None of my grandchildren, I don't let them walk because it's not level. And when I called about that, I keep getting the runaround.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. If you want to get in touch with us, I know it's kind of hard right now, challenging because there's so much going on at the bottom of the screen. But you can email our city manager, any of me or any of the council, but I'm gonna give you the city manager's email address. But also for those who's listening, E as in egg, D as in dog, O as in orange, O as in orange, and M as in Monique at eastpointcity.org.
Okay, dot org. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please continue, stay on and listen to the rest of the agenda, please.
I will.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else on this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, there's now somebody that just goes by the name iPhone.
Okay.
The person who has their hand raised that just says iPhone, it doesn't say your name, you should be able to speak now.
Oh, hey, how's it going, council? Mayor Monique Owens?
How you doing, sir?
My name is Andre Mitchell. I want to speak on the buildings that are in the lot where I've been in business for like the last 11 years. They're abandoned. I think they're owned by the city. And I was wondering what you guys were going to do with those buildings. It would be great if there's some more businesses would be there. I thought it would help the economy and, uh, and make the parking lot look a lot better. I'm located at 22237 Kelly Road. Right next to where Papa John's used to be. It's like six buildings that's in this lot. They're abandoned. I wonder what you guys are gonna do with them.
Um, well, that's part of the agenda. We'll tell you, we'll talk more about it. And if you had any more else to say about it, that's on a part of the agenda, part of our discussion. And when you hear the discussion, let me stop it right now because I don't want to take your time. So the part of the hearing of the public is you voice your opinion, also talk about some of the things that are on the agenda. And one of the things that you're talking about is actually on the agenda. And so we're going to discuss it and things like that. If you, you know, stay on, that's under our new business. And since we hear what you have to say right now about it, it will help us and better make a better choice on that. And you also get an additional three minutes at the end.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Were you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Have anybody else, Mr. Fairbrother?
Madam Mayor, there are no other hands raised at this time and there's still nothing written in the chat, so I believe it's safe to close the floor.
Okay. So now that we have no more anyone else in the hearing of the public speaking, now the hearing of the public is closed. I think everybody that came on to hear another public, in addition, you have additional three minutes. So please stay on and listen to the, what's going on in your city. If you have any more opinions or issues or ideas on what we speak on, please stay on. So now we're going into the approval of the minutes, council.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the minutes of July 7th, 2020 of the regular meeting.
Support.
Moving and supportive. Please call the row.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Next item is scheduled hearings. And we will be speaking with Mayor Kim Walby. He's actually also the new director of SMDA. And I asked him to be here so that our residents can know more about what they're spending their tax money on. A lot of, we have new residents and we have older residents here and probably have never heard of the SMDA and so forth. And you know, we spent a lot of money on cleaning our water and on waste. And I just wanted him to give us a brief history of it where we are in the present and what we are planning on doing in the future. Good evening, Mayor Walby. How are you?
Very good, Mayor. Thank you for inviting me. Good evening to the rest, good evening to the rest of the council. You want to just start right in?
Yes, can you tell them what it is? Because I, you know, how we use the SMDA, let them know exactly what that is, each one, and then go into it, please.
No, no problem. So I am the Director of Operations for the SMDA and the SEMSD. So we, we have both organizations. So I'll do an overview of each of them. And I will start with the SMDA, which is the South McComb Disposal Authority, which of course, East Point, Roseville, Warren, Centerline and St. Clair Shores are members of. This organization maintains and operates four landfills and a transfer station. That's what the SMDA does. The four landfills, what we call Freedom Hill and Fostoria. Obviously, we know what Freedom Hill is. That area, that parking lot behind the, behind the amphitheater there on Metro Parkway. And also across the Red Run, there's a vacant piece of land. We call that Fostoria. And that is again on Utica as you come into 60 Mauro. So we have two of them there. We have another one on 24 and Card. And then the final one is on 30 Mile and DeQuinder out in Washington Township. The one at 24 and Card is McComb Township. We maintain those facilities. When I say maintain them, it's simple as, as the lawn maintenance. And when I say lawn maintenance, a majority of, both of the 24 and 30 mile are probably close to 250 acres. So they're, they're sizable. These were closed in the 60s and 70s. So we maintain them with, with maintaining the lawns. We also have to work on removing the leachate. Leachate being, you know, liquid from dissolved garbage. So we're always maintaining that. We are constantly putting, you know, dirt, clay, et cetera, on there as, as typical landfill settle, right? So you, you, you must continue to maintain the cap of these, of these landfills. We are testing always the groundwater there. Those are obviously requirements and majority of all these other requirements are by Egle, right? We're constantly doing reports and that. We were, we tested 47, 47 wells at 24 and Card with Egle being on premise in June. So we're always sampling and testing the groundwater and most recently, we're now testing for PFAS. So new things are always happening and landfills, even though they've been there for 50 years, all five of our communities were on these things for forever, basically. We have planted hundreds of trees actually at Freedom Hill in attempt to use the trees to suck up some of the leachate. So we're maintaining that and actually on a yearly basis, plant trees there. We also have the monitor, the gas monitors that are on all the different sites too. So around about, that's what we do at the at the landfills. We, they also operate a transfer station. The SMDA's owned the transfer station since, I think, the early 70s. It has been usually leased out. Last June, the, the board decided with actually the closing of the incinerator in Detroit. And when it was bid out, there wasn't a lot of opportunity that the, what we, what we were usually getting is revenue had fallen. So the board opted to operate itself. So, which is, I think, the first time in history, they decided to operate itself. So we hired four employees. The transfer station is in Roseville, just a little bit before 12 Mile there, really by 12, by Tim Hortons on Grossback. And in essence, it's a, it's a large compactor, right? So garbage comes in from a number of individual companies, cities, actually Warren is, is, delivers a lot there. Household garbage, but also contractors' waste. You see, you know, the bins around the roll offs that are in people's homes or in an operation as they, they maybe remodel, et cetera. So that comes into the transfer station. We push it through a compactor, push it into trailers that we contract out and then those trailers eventually go over to waste management. We charge a fee per ton somewhere between $30 and $35 a ton. And, and that's how actually they, there's, there's revenue there. And that revenue, we put back into the SMDA, right, for the cost of the landfills and those costs that will continue to always be there. So that was the, in essence, the point to operate it, to generate more revenue, to help offset costs for the, the landfills that are ongoing. And on a daily basis, we do about 550 to 650 tons a day, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 AM to 4:30 in the evening. And again, we have four employees there. And I'm glad to answer any questions. I will jump into the, you know, if you don't mind, I'll do the SEMSD, then I'm glad to answer questions. But that's kind of a brief overview of the SMDA, South McComb Disposal Authority. The SEMSD, which is the Southeast McComb Sanitary District, is just the three communities, which is East Point, Roseville and St. Clair Shores. We're a union shop here. We have 11 employees. We got operators and we got administrative assistants who do all the billing. Until the October of 2018, this organization operated what we call the Hoffman Pump Station, which is on Jefferson north of 12 Mile Road and the Rio Vista Pump Station, which is in between 10 and 11 Mile Road. At top of the regulators and level sensors and actually the large nine mile drain that goes down nine mile, which is an 11 foot box. On October of 2018, the SEMSD purchased what we would, was called the NE SDS Northeast-South district that was actually operated by Wayne County. Wayne County had decided to no longer be in the sanitary, sanitary business. They were working to shed themselves of all of that from the down river communities to us. It was a small operation, but critical to us because it was between where we deliver your sanitary, we gave it to Wayne County, then Wayne County delivers it to the Great Lakes Water Authority. So we wanted, they wanted to sell, we wanted to buy only because then we would be control ourselves. We would, we would then be, you know, use an automotive term, we would now be the tier one to Great Lakes Water. So what we purchased at that point of in October, which was a couple of year negotiations with Wayne County, was the Martin Road Pump Station, which is on Marty Road, actually right between St. Clair Shores and Grosspoint Woods, right on the border, right by the Assumption Grech Church. We also purchased the Kirby Punch Pump Station, which is down in Grosspoint Farms. It's at the end of the line. And the Grosspoint Interceptor, which is basically the pump. So on St. Clair Shores, it's called the Jefferson Interceptor. And when it goes into Grosspoint, it's called the Grosspoint Interceptor, which is about three and a half miles of pipe. So that's where the sanitary actually flows and flows through the Kirby at the end and gets into what we call the Fox Creek, which is basically goes to Great Lakes Water. With that, we also operate the Milk River. We did not purchase the Milk River, but we operate the Milk River now. And the Milk River is Grosspoint Woods and Harper Woods sanitary. We also have a gate that we handle the Grosspoint Shores sanitary too, but very small. The reason we operate the Milk River is because that goes also into the Grosspoint Interceptor that, that we own. So you want to make sure you're, you're balancing flow. So to have someone else operate the Milk River and not have the SEMSD do it was not prudent. So we, that's why we got into the operations. Again, we don't own the Milk River, but So we, that's why we got into the operations again. We don't own the Milk River, but we operate because it all ends up in the Grosspoint Interceptor, which is that pipe that runs down Marty and Underlock Moore and all pass ligged into um really about seven mile road in in Mac. It's actually Shell fine, but seven and Mac. So uh we operate that. Um, and it's 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 busy. So the goal, of course, at the end of the day for the SEMSD, as it always has been, is A, not to flood basements and not to spill in the lake. Uh, that that's our role is to to bring that um sanitary down those lines and and deliver it to Grosspoint or to the Great Lakes Water Authority and um not spill into the lake and not spill in the basements. And we have a a number of pumps, large pumps. I mean, you know, Milk River actually, you know, I don't want to keep going detail, but you know, it's got seven pumps and the bigger pumps are a hundred and eighty-three thousand gallons per minute that we can pump. And there are times that you have to uh run three, four, or five pumps to make sure that 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 water stays out of people's basements and gets it into the Grosspoint uh Interceptor. Uh, same with Kirby and and Marty. These are booster stations. Not everything flows by elevation. So sometimes you got to bring them, bring it up and then push it back down because we're obviously, all of us are are flat. And we don't, we're not hilly and then and elevation is sometimes a problem. So um that's that's kind of what we do. Um, I mean, that's that's a it's a brief overview, but I thought that's what you were kind of looking at, what we do, what we do in the future. Uh, there there was one of the questions is there's really not too much expansion here. The SMDA did expand, obviously, with the transfer station last year. Uh, about eighteen months ago, the SEMSD expanded when we purchased the the Wayne County portion. There is really no more need for expansion here. Uh, it it's to maintain uh what what we have. And um that's that's important because it's um it's it's vital to the communities.
I'll let the those that are listening at home know how much East Point, a percentage of how much we paying to that?
Uh, East East Point's monthly totals, uh the whole total is five hundred and sixty-six thousand into the Southeast McComb Sanitary District. And actually, this year's was uh an increase of of two and a half uh percent.
Other residents, why, please?
Pardon me?
Can you let us know why? There's an increase.
Yeah, I could, sure, there's, there's, we get, and I'm at the office, so that phone's ringing. The the increases, we we always have normal increases in some of our labor contracts. Uh, we also get, majority of it comes from Great Lakes Water, right? So we now get their increases. Great Lakes Water sends us a bill at the yearly and and we base that bill on on flows that come in from the different communities. But it's lion's share. It comes from Great Lakes Water. That that usually gives us an increase. They 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 have, they have a ability to go to four percent, but it was not given uh that this year, but it comes from Great Lakes Water.
Now currently, what we were working on, because um some of um those that are listening, I'm actually uh on the board of this uh SMDA and SEMSD um board. And um of course, I did the tour, took me almost all day. And I don't expect everyone who's listening to understand everything, um but you always can call me or um, you know, America Walby, who's also the director. Um, I'm always calling Mayor. So uh for uh information and things like that, can you uh let them know about the chapitaphone and what we were thinking about doing, but the department, uh DEQ said no. Because I know we were talking about expanding the chapitaphone and explain what the chapitaphone is for those that do not know and what we were planning to do and why that didn't go through.
Okay, well, the chapitaphone is not under under us, a- as as you know, that is under the McComb County Public Works and it's under Candace Miller. Uh, but I will give, be glad to give an overview of that. Uh, it it I don't believe the stamp has come yet from Egle to say um they denied the permit, but I do agree, concur that I think it is is going to be uh denied. But I just to clearly state, I don't believe it's been denied yet. Uh, it was a two-phase project that 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 they were um gonna enter in. And the first phase was um to expand the uh basin over there. Uh, currently, the basin is twenty million, twenty-nine million gallons of of storage there. Uh, and they were going to basically expand it, double it, uh create another twenty-nine million gallons uh uh out there. Uh, if you've been out there, there's there's a canal. Uh, if you look at the basin, they dug out a canal just uh basically to the south of them. And that's where where they hold water and they were going to enlarge basically that canal and be able to hold twenty-nine million more uh gallons. Uh, so that in essence, uh they didn't have to dump in the lake. The the estimate from McComb County Public Works was that uh they would be able to cut spills. That's what we term spills when we have to go into the lake because there's no, our our basins are full and we must, we must get rid of that, that water. There's more water is coming to us, uh seventy-four percent of the spills. So it it was significant. Um, I don't want to go into all why Egle declined it, that that's their decision, but that in essence was to to enlarge that that chapitaphone by twenty-nine million gallons. Um, secondly, their other phase was uh on the eight and a half pipe that runs down nine mile. So we have a pipe that's on nine mile. They have a pipe that's on nine mile. They happen to call it eight, the eight and a half district that St. Clair Shores and East Point are part of, and that's called inline storage. So they they were going to store another uh ten million gallons by putting weers into those, into those uh into that eight and a half pipe. Uh, that is still on track. They are still engineering that. I believe that will will commence operation or commence construction uh next year, either second or third quarter. Uh, but um those were the two projects that the McComb County Public Works were were and wanted to do uh at chapitaphone and try to, at the end of the day, was to cut spills down uh from getting into Lake St. Clair.
Uh, Mayor, now correct me if I'm wrong, because you've been on this board longer than me. So for those that, if I was a resident out there, I'd be sitting there saying, what is he talking about? So for instance, on that one straight nine mile, right there, when you hit Jefferson, it's a big, big thing. It's called our chapitaphone, which we hold water. And we hold that water because it's it's only so much water we can send down to the Great Lakes to clean. So we store that water and so we don't have overfields in our basement. So we hold that water, we clean that water and what and we we dump it into Lake St. Clair. If if we have to, we don't want to, but if we have to, what we do is always clean. And what we're doing now is we trying to hold more water and that is what um he was talking about and expand it to twenty mi- twenty-nine more million gallons over there. So we still working with uh Egle uh to do that. And if that is turned down, we're gonna um do some uh construction at the bottom on nine mile to um store more water and put some type of piping to hold the water um a little bit more, correct? Tell me with that a little bit.
Yeah, again, it it's it's sanitary, so it's a combination. It's it's sanitary and rainwater, right? I mean, our our systems, your your system and and the city of East Point, the city of St. Clair Shores, we got a lot of combined uh sewer sewers in here. We're we're older communities. But yes, we would build what they call a weir, so it's kind of like a little bit of a dam in there. And so you you would basically have these pipes that are nine, ten, eleven feet. And you would, you would hold the water and it would be, it would be like a dam. And so you'd be filling that, you'd be filling the pipe up. And by filling the pipe up, you're obviously holding, holding water, not putting it into uh what they call is the RTB, the the basin down at the end of of nine mile road. And and the reason there's opportunity there because they've they've done flow testing and shown that um, you know, only a small amount of water runs through it and we're not really filling up that. We have this big pipe and we're not filling it up. And the dam then would hold the water and be able to back this water all the way up and use the pipe in essence as storage to um, as you said, uh hold it as long as we can and see if we can't get it all in these lines and get it down to, you know, Great Lakes Water instead of putting it in the lake.
Right. Um, now, we didn't have the chapitaphone and and what we were talking about putting down in nine mile, it will make basements flood, correct?
If you if you don't, if you don't get rid of the water, it would make basements flood, yes.
Right.
The sanitary, yes.
And that is uh what you all are paying for. So you know, um, if you didn't get all this tonight, I'm not trying to get you to know all these things. And I just want uh the residents to understand. So when I'm on a board or whatever I'm doing, I want you guys to have some idea of what's going on in your community. Um, I'm still learning, so learn with me. Um, anybody have any questions? I think we can open it up to the residents who have questions for Mayor Walby. Do you see any?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a a statement, having served on both of those boards for twelve years when I was mayor, I can, I can tell you that uh the committee works very hard. Um, they just go go over to their office and sit there. Uh, there's a lot of decisions to be made, a lot of of problems that they uh monthly try to solve. So my, um, if I had a hat, I'd take my hat off to them.
Uh, and and just by the way, uh Councilman Curly, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I I I've seen your name on on some documents as I uh I I was breezing through. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's that's the Councilman in uh East Point. I think you served with 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 Mayor Walby.
My buddy.
Okay, yep, yep.
Wow. Anyone have any um questions or anything they want to ask?
Sure, Madam Mayor, I do.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mayor Walby. Thanks for coming out, uh giving us an update on SMDA and the SEMSD. Um, I did have one question, though, and this probably be for you, to Mayor Owens. And uh I'm assuming that you had seen my email. I didn't receive any response, though, about your actual position with the group, Mayor Walby. You were chair of the board. And then the board had hired you to this group.
Yep.
I just didn't understand how that uh was um ethical, essentially. I I it it doesn't seem that um, you know, board that you were just chair of. I know you, you know, had with, you know, you had abstained from the vote. That hired you to the SEMSD, though, as Director of Operations.
Mm-hmm. Well, uh again, it was unfortunate. We had an individual was there and he had um, he quit, right? As you as you know, I think you you're aware of that. And um they decided that um they were looking for someone who had experience, who understood the system. And you're right, I I did not vote on it. Uh, the three mayor, three mayors and the, I guess, the director of of the city of Warren, who sits on, other than uh Mayor Faust. And um I didn't attend the meetings and they made, they made the decision and um I didn't vote on any of that.
Any other questions?
Also, Mayor Owens, I guess, then, since you're one of the other two board members for the SEMSD, how I I don't, I I mean, how are, someone you were just on the board with, you're hiring at to a position with with the SM SEMSD? I just, I don't, um, I know, I'm sure you saw my email. I don't understand how that, was this position posted publicly anywhere? I mean, from what I understand, it was a special meeting to hire Mr. Walby also.
Um, if you were in that meeting, you would know our attorney, um, you have to be in that meeting. Uh, the it, everything was uh okay. We always go through the ethical uh procedures and making sure that the attorney knows and um and how that, how that goes. Also, um, I just became mayor, so I wasn't on the board that long with Mayor Walby. Uh, obviously, you know, his his father has experience. He's been on the board for many years. He knows the engineering. He knows everything about what's going on. And I feel like um, you know, he has taught me a lot since um I've been on there. And uh I thought he was the right person for the job. So um, and I'm a, I'm a keep it that way, you know, so anything else?
Okay, no, that's all.
Okay, anybody else would like to ask a question for the mayor?
Here's Addie Richardson would like to speak again. Addie?
Hi, Ms. Richardson, yes.
Yes, I was listening and I think it was around that time. I don't know if these people were coming around through our yard at that time. Uh, I mean, I hear him saying that it was to prevent our basement from flooding. And my basement did flood. And it's it's sinking now right around the pipe that sticks out of the ground for the water. And it's all because the ground is unlevel by the fence and it by the thing. And it did uh flood. So I think around the time that he was speaking of what they came and did something here, that's around the time that it happened. But it was almost winter time and it was cold. You couldn't go out there. And I was told that because I should have said something earlier, well, I didn't know it was going to settle like that. So I started calling the Water Works Department. I spoke to Irene. She got in contact with another gentleman, which was a business, and the number was five eight six four four five five zero one zero. And I call every week. I make sure I I was calling every day, but I was thought I should call once a week. But uh they're still not doing anything. The last person came, looked at it and left. And I never have not heard from anyone since then. So I think it's when around that time they were doing something and going through the uh the fence areas of everyone's home.
Hmm.
When they were making that change. So that's sounds so familiar. And then to not to help it so that a basement would not flood, and mine did.
Um, since I don't know all the story of that and what you gave me, uh I think RDPW is the one that probably would have been responsible. I don't know if uh SEMSD goes behind uh housing, Mayor Walby. I don't think.
No, no.
That was probably the city. So um concerning that issue, again, email um our city manager, Ms. Zoom, with that email, E D O O M at eastpointcity.org and let us know more about that. We have a lot of things going on and I know um you don't know where to go and things like that, and we want to help you figure those things out.
I appreciate it.
And if you don't hear anything from her um in a certain amount of time, you know, um, contact me and counsel, okay?
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all just put all your problems in one email. Let us know. Get it to us at all at once. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any uh questions or concerns about, while we have the mayor here, uh St. Clair Shores, who's uh now our new director of SMSD and SMDA?
Mayor Chef Lex would like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Chef, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Can.
Awesome, awesome. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh the rest of the council, uh I want to thank you for the opportunity. Also, I want to, I want to thank all of you for your services because I know it's dangerous out here right now through all the pandemic and all that stuff. So I want to thank all of you for for being in your positions right now. I'm just going to speak a little bit on uh what the mayor was just saying, uh he was saying about the the water system. And a young lady was just only saying about her her basement flooding. So if I could turn this around, I wanted to show you guys something. Let me see something real quick, if I can.
Let's stay here, Mr. Lex. Give you a couple, there you go. How you doing? We're we're back. We can't hear you. It's all mute now. Okay, you want to hear me?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you, yes.
Okay, so they were saying something about flooding. So uh today, earlier, this is my home. This is the basement. And I came home from work earlier and my basement just flooded as we were speaking on it. So that's why I was laughing when he was speaking on it. So what I was saying is about the whole situation, about basements flooding. Um, I know he said he's in, what he said he was in, not Grosspoint, but uh where's the area?
He's the mayor of St. Clair Shores, but he's our uh our new director of um the SEMSD, which holds water, make sure we don't have flooding and things like that. He's been the mayor of St. Clair Shores for over ten years.
Awesome.
Was there, so his dad has prior experience with um our uh former mayor, um Councilman Curly.
Okay, which is awesome.
Yeah, so every, all the knowledge has been passed on, so um going back to what Councilman Michael said. That's why, yeah, that's why I passed it on to him. So you know, and he's passed it on to me.
I was about to say that because he, I guess he questioned you about hiring. I said if this guy has experience, you know, um, you know, twenty-plus years and his pops, you know, was there, you know, hey, listen, as long as they're not misusing our funds, then it's all good. If you know what you're doing, then handle your business and keep doing that. Um, secondly, but I was going to say about East Point, like she was saying, her basement, my basement just flooded. So I don't know if the outer areas, you know, like Grosspoint and and all the other McComb areas are flooding. But I know a lot of East Point homes, who I have a partner, who I deal with, um, cutting lawns with, his basement floods as well. So I don't know if this is just the East Point thing, but we really need to kind of concentrate on 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 right here in this area and the East Point area as well. I don't know if it's just outward, but I know that's the situation. We need help. I went to court already uh for my landlord about it, but the the judge pretty much just cussed me out through the courtroom. Um, I'm telling my, I really felt disrespected and hurt because at that moment, I was threatened with jail or, you know, just basically shut up or go to jail. And I'm trying to explain like, listen, this lady is getting her money and not helping us. I mean, if we're renting, y'all need to come down on, I'm I'm not, this is, I'm not trying to go off court, but we talked about flooding. So when I go to the proper portals to get it done and then the judge cusses me out. you know what I'm saying, I'm like, hey, listen, this is happening, she's not fixing it. So of course, we're trying to tell her, hey, we'll put the money in escrow, whatever, whatever, but he said, hey, if you owe her money, do you even yes or no, I'm like, yeah, but I don't want to hear nothing, or, you know, or I'll hold you in contempt, and it's like, you know what, I live in this community, I work with the children in this community, and for me, I'm not going to say the children are more important than adults, but I I kind of care for kids more than I do adults, okay? You know what I'm saying, because they are our future, and, you know, so therefore, I pay attention to, like I said, our young, and making it better for our area. But if we're not going to get the proper help, when we need the help, then what are people in their position for? See, and I know, Monique, you're trying to get it going, excuse me, Mayor Owens, I know you're trying to get it going. I know Mayor, what's his name, Walby?
Walby.
Walby, I know you're doing your thing, but we do need help when it comes to the plumbing, should I say, I don't, I'm not a mechanic when it comes to the plumbing, okay, or plumber, but yeah, we do need help when it comes to that, especially in East Point. So I just hope we, you know, we step it up somewhere in there, that's all I was going to say, you know, on that issue, you know, on flooding and stuff like that.
Okay, now with the issue that you just had about the flooding, you might want to email, the email that I just sent everyone, tell everybody to email?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have to send our DPW department and look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Walby, you have anything to say to?
Two, two, two comments, one, I'm just correct, because it's been a common mistake for 20 years, but I'm actually W A L B Y, Ted Wabi was W A H B Y Mayor, so we, he isn't my dad, but
Oh, wow, well, look.
It's been, it's a common mistake.
At this point, you should, you should, look, it sounded like he was your dad, because everybody knew each other, look, so.
Right, we're by the same city.
Well, it seemed like he took you under his wing, and, okay, let's say mentor, okay? So let's say mentor, that can be like your dad, look, yeah.
Okay.
So you had a mentor for so many years, and now you can be mine, okay, so go ahead.
And then the second item is, is, you know, the, the, the SEMSD really operates and really becomes in during rain events, right? Well, this is, we're a rain event operation, right, that's when, when, when we're pushing, we're pushing water, on normal days and that, just, it's, it's, it's the flow, and we're doing the maintenance, so it's, we're, we're, we're under big, big stress when it rains, so that, that's when we're really moving, so, some of these concerns, I think you are correct, you're sending them to the DPW, which is correct, it's really not the SEMSD, because we're under the, mostly when, when we got rain and, and heavy rain.
Okay, yes, so if anybody have any flooding problems, please, again, edoom@eastpointcity.org. edoom@eastpointcity.org, anybody else have anything to say about what we discussed, and if not, we can keep it going. Mayor Walby, since we are talking about some of the problems of the flooding, which you do have a part of, how do we decrease that, those problems, I mean, do we talk about these houses, if these houses are in certain areas, is a problem in, you know, in that area we need to fix? And, you know, in that region, might be a flooding problem in the same area, is it some digging down we need to fix down there that you are involved in, or that's just East Point?
I, in my opinion, those aren't our pipes, meaning we're, we're the main pipe down Nine Mile Road, so it, it's somewhere before it gets into that main pipe, which is either, you know, a Roosevelt, right, when it's coming down from, in the, the North End, or, or St. Clair Shores, or East Point, the East Point, so it's usually a community's issue, until it taps into the the, the, the main pipe, which is either, for you, would be Eight and a Half District, which is from the McComb County Public Works, or the Nine Mile Pipe, which is SEMSD, but the issue is usually before that, with either, you know, some type of blockage, or many times, obviously, we're, we both live in these older communities with play pipes in their front yard, and they become blocked by trees, and they need to be, they need to be, you know, rooted out, etc. You know those problems, everybody knows those issues.
All right, so if you have problems in East Point, you know, let us know, DPW, also, our City Manager, and what Mayor Walby is talking about, when we have flooding and things like that, it's a combination of those cities that we all share. So if we share pipes and things like that, he has most, the majority to do with that, not just East Point, but the things that we share, correct?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else, and we're going to let the Mayor go, he has a busy job. Well, not two jobs, Mayor and Director. Mr. Fairbrother?
I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you, everyone who attended and listened in on a schedule here, as Mayor Walby, our new Director of SMDA and SEMSD, thank you, Mayor Walby.
All right, thank you, anytime.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, anytime.
Tell your dad I said hi, just playing. Okay, next is unfinished business, we have none, we're going to go to reports from Administration, starting with our City Manager, Ms. Doom.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to share that we had a very positive groundbreaking for Aaron Park. I won't say too much more, because I'm sure you'd like to share a little bit more information with your report. Typically, the Beautification Commission has a cleanup each year, but due to COVID-19, we're very appreciative that Director Rohib and a lot of volunteers, including Harvey Curly, had a citywide cleanup, and picked up a lot of trash bags, and so, very, very pleased at how positive that was. Now, today was the Board of Review, typically, our Board of Review is in March, and due to COVID-19, which seems to dominate everything that we're doing this year, people who could not get out to appeal their assessments, or meet with the Board of Assessors, they had an opportunity to do so today, and so that was successful, that was at 9:00 AM this morning, and they finished that shortly after. So, um, I'd also like to share that July 17th, which was past Friday, we applied for the CARES Act, which is a grant to cover a lot of the costs that were associated with COVID-19, including payroll, you know, cost for personal property protection, and I want to give a special kudos to Director Bloom and Brian Fairbrother for pulling a lot of information together, the staff pulled it together, and we, we were very robust in our request on what we'd like for reimbursement. We'll see if we get everything we like, but everything but the kitchen sink, and maybe part of the kitchen sink. We put into that grant because we'd like to get reimbursed for as many costs as we can. Now, today, towards the end of the day, not at 4:00 PM, but a little after 3:00 PM, we received a report from our Clerks Department, that we have, it appears that we're going to have three people who are running for the vacant position, that was left open when Mayor Owens became the Mayor and vacated her seat as a Councilwoman. We'll have final totals tomorrow, but as of today, we have Rob Baker, who has turned in and had his petition certified. Sylvia Moore turned in her petitions, they're verifying signatures this evening. Tanya Gladney also turned in her petitions, they're verifying signatures. We should have, you know, a positive total, I expect all of them will have enough signatures, and then we'll post that tomorrow morning, when we get that information, we'll put it on our Facebook. And so that, we'll share that with our community, who is running for the vacated position. And that's what I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you so much, we're going to go to our Director of Finance, Mr. Blom.
Karen Owens, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that, please.
Thanks, thanks for the update, Ms. Doom, I was just curious, when Director Rohib was giving the update on body worn cameras?
Oh, yes, I think he'd like to give that with his report tonight. Is he with us?
Director? Director Rohib, is he there? Do you see him in there?
Looking, I don't see him there. Unless he's planning on, I can give you a little bit of an update, I thought he wanted to give it to you himself, but unless he had some difficulty getting on. He has met with one firm already, to talk about the cameras and what they're able to provide. Do, again, you know, this sounds like a broken record, due to COVID-19, there's been a high demand for cameras, there's been a lot of issues, people have been out of work, so as of last Friday, he was meeting with another vendor to talk about the type of cameras they have, and the cost, and he did share with me that one of the vendors has given them cameras to test, like a demo camera, to see how they like that. And so he's going to pull that together, and I'm hopeful that he'll have something very shortly for the council. But just know that he's really very hard at work, looking at the best product for East Point, not only, you know, price point, but what is a good camera, what's highly recommended, and then he wants to be able to bring you a full report, and here's what we have, and here's the recommendations we have, and why.
I just, well, thank you, I just want to make sure this doesn't fall off the radar, though, I don't know the rest of council feels, but I would, I'd like to just at least make some sort of budget amendment, you know, so that we do have this in, in the budget, and, you know, it doesn't fall off the radar here, and we, we are, you know, we are planning for it then. So I, I mean, I, I would just make, I mean, Mayor, I just would make a motion that we add, as we talked about before, $100,000 into the budget as a budget amendment, you know, we keep, you know, this keeps getting delayed, I thought, you know, two meetings ago, we were going to already have this taken care of, so, I'd like to at least offer that motion up and see, see where it goes. All right, well, we'll discuss it at another time, but I, I mean, I thought Director Rohib was supposed to be here himself, is what I was told.
Yeah, I was, I'm surprised he's not on.
So. Okay, that's the only question I had, though.
Anybody else have a question, Council? Moving along, Director of Finance, Mr. Blom, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. First of all, I would like to reiterate that we are open to the public. There have been people at Clerks, there's been people at assessing buildings, they seem to have forgotten about finance, but we're here, ready to take your payments. I think a lot of people are using the mail, and at this point, that's probably a mistake, because the mail is extremely slow these days. So you might want to start coming back into City Hall and taking payments that way. The other thing I'd like to do is, we had Director Walby, Mayor of St. Clair Shores, on, talking about the various authorities that we're a member of. I'd like to give a quick highlight of how that actually affects the residents financially.
Thank you.
The disposal authority, that's the landfill, a small, very small portion of your monthly rubbish charge goes to cover ongoing post-closure expenses, they call it, the, the maintenance of those landfills. We get charges for that, and it's covered by the, the trash tree fee. So that's actually a very minor piece of the cost to the residents. The sanitary district itself, that is the, about 90% of your sewer rate. We get a fixed monthly charge, as the Mayor mentioned, it was 566,000 per month. That's not an annual number, that's a monthly number. And that does constitute almost $7 million to the City of East Point on an annual basis, and that is passed on to the residents buried in the, not buried, but it's part, a large part of the sewer rate, and that's how we collect the money to pay for all the operations on that. And then the Chapaton Retention Basin, that is a county, part of a county drain system, that is paid for on the tax bill as a millage. It shows up on your tax bill, and as a Chapter 20, that's just a reference to the state drain code, and the Chapter 20 of the drain code is what allows us to do a millage, to pay for those expenses. So there's three different elements, but obviously, the sewer is, is the largest amount, both in the sewer rates, and then the, the millage that the residents pay for that. So that's the, the financial side of what was discussed tonight. The final thing is, City Manager Doom mentioned the, the grant that was applied for, we did include the sink for the Police and the Fire Department in there, we're trying to get every penny we can. But I would like to actually thank the, both my payroll clerk, Danielle Palmerville, who pulled together a lot of information, it was kind of a last minute crunch to get it done, and then I know we stressed out the Administrative Assistant over at Police, trying to get some payroll data out of her, and it really was kind of a day and a half crash course to get it done, but we did meet the deadline. So just wanted to thank everybody that helped out on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Blom, any questions, Mr. Blom, please? Saying, I'm going to go to our City Attorney, Mr. Albright, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I only had one item this evening to discuss, and it's essentially just an item for direction from the City Council. In light of COVID-19, show cause hearings related to the dangerous building hearings have not been conducted. Now that I think that the City Administration, and certainly the council, and members of the public are comfortable with participating in City Council meetings via Zoom, is it the council's wishes to think about or begin scheduling show cause hearings, perhaps a couple at a time, in the near future, via Zoom? I'm sure that City Administration has at least 10, possibly 15 different properties that would be eligible for a show cause hearing, and if that's the case, I can get those addresses from City Administration, and present those to the City Council, and then the City Council then can schedule those show cause hearings via Zoom. Our office is certainly comfortable conducting those, those hearings via Zoom, but again, that will ultimately be the council's decision.
Council, do you have any feedback on that?
I'm comfortable if they're on Zoom.
I'm comfortable as well.
That's fine.
Definitely be happy having the meetings on, the show cause on Zoom.
No objection here.
Okay, thank you, I think that's a unanimous decision, so I will get in touch with Ms. Van Heren tomorrow and let her know of the council's decision, and then for the next meeting, I will bring a list of properties, and then the council then can schedule those properties for show cause hearings in the near future, and then we'll get all the necessary notices out. And Madam Mayor, that's all I had, I haven't answered any questions this evening.
I have a quick question on the Arts Commission, I know, Mr. Councilman DeMonico, and he speaks about ethics all the time, so I want to make sure we ethically write as far as that, now, I know his wife is on the Board, I don't know if we have anything in our charter saying that spouses or something like that can't be on Boards, or anything like that, because I know I had gotten some, some emails saying that a lot of people were saying that, why is his wife on the Board, and, you know, and they're married, so I just want to be ethically, ethically correct, and before, you know, because she's been doing a good job, but I want to, you know, since it's always brought up, I want to make sure, where, when we bring it up, not when it's beneficial for a person, but overall, be transparent, so. Attorney Albright?
I'm not aware of the specific section, I'd have to look at the Ethics Ordinance. I'm not aware of any issues under the circumstances, but I'm certainly happy to take another look at the Ethics Ordinance.
Yeah, because I know we're supposed to be, I was supposed to be appointing him tonight, I just want to do things. So I appointed her before, and I just, I know, and I had got a little, you know, backlash from that, but I thought, you know, I appoint people based upon the job and the experience, like I did the Mayor, and I did that for Councilman's wife as well, so going forward, I just want to make sure that this is, because I know this is our, in our charter now, that he created, so I want to make sure we stand by what we talk about, what we say, so.
Mayor Owens, I mean, this is, this is completely different, I mean, this is an unpaid volunteer position. The, the position with the SEMSD is highly paid. The position with the SEMSD is a highly paid position.
Well, I'm not trying to go back and forth with you, Mr. DeMonico. All I'm asking is to make sure. I didn't say he wasn't doing anything unethical. I said, I want to make sure if I appoint your wife again, I'm doing things right. That's what I said. I didn't say he wasn't. Okay?
Well, you, you can't bring that up in a public meeting and expect, about myself and my wife and expect me not to respect. So.
We're talking about, and that's, that's another reason why it might be a conflict, because we're talking about a resident and, and you being a part of that. We're, I'm trying to ask him a question about, should I keep her on, you know, so? Which I'm trying to do that, but I want to make sure I'm doing it, you know, before I do it again. I'm doing things right, so.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Mr. DeMonico?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, well, let's keep it going. New business, we're, we're finally at new business. We're gonna do, deal with a intergovernmental agreement for traffic signal modernization. Council? Have anything to say on this?
Your mayor, I'll motion that we approve this. We approve the intergovernmental agreement between City of East Point, City of Roseville, Macomb County to share the project cost for the modernization of traffic signals along Ten Mile and Hayes, well, along Ten Mile at Hayes, Brittany, Raven, Fox and Kelly Road, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city.
Support.
One question is, and Mr. Blum, about why is East Point paying a little bit more of the share than Roseville? I think we talked about it a little bit, and, because I think we're paying eighty thousand, and Roseville is paying forty-two thousand.
Madam Mayor, I can answer that.
Uh-huh. How are you doing this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, respected council. The city's share is approximately thirty percent. Macomb County's share is fifty-five percent. And City of Roseville's share is fifteen percent approximately. And these percentages are derived based on the location. For example, Ten Mile at Hayes, our share is twenty-five percent. The county's share is seventy-five percent. Because one, one signal head is facing our street, whereas three are facing county street. That's why it is a twenty-five percent for us and seventy-five percent for the county and nothing for Roseville. Whereas for Ten Mile and Brittany, our share is twenty-five percent, county's share is fifty percent, and Roseville's share is twenty-five percent. Because one signal head is facing our street, two signal heads are facing the county street that is Ten Mile, and one head is facing Roseville. That's why they are getting twenty-five percent, we are getting twenty-five percent, and the county is getting fifty percent. And the third one, Ten Mile and Raven, our share is twenty-five percent, county's share is fifty percent, and Roseville's share is twenty-five percent. Again, it is because one head is facing our street, one head is facing Roseville, and two heads are facing the county street. Ten Mile and Flox or Paul, fifty percent for us and fifty percent of, for the county and nothing for Roseville, because no signal head is facing Roseville Street. So the percentages are derived based on the number of signal heads at each intersection facing whether it is the City of East Point Street or Roseville Street or a county street.
Okay, thank you. And just stay right there, because you're on the next item, Abraham.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Albright?
Yes. Next item is Item B, the bid award for 2020 asphalt resurfacing. Council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think this is going to be at least one item on the agenda that's going to make a lot of people very happy once it gets done. And, you know, just to let the people know that the administration are working like you know what to find money to get these local streets fixed. So I think we're all happy that this is on the agenda, that it's realization that we're taking that, that step forward. So we probably all would like to make the motion, but with your permission, Madam Mayor, I would move that we award the bid for resurfacing Roxanna Avenue, Stevens Drive to Haas, Holland Avenue, Roseland to Wilmont, Stricker Avenue, Pushing to David, Stricker Avenue, Virginia to Shakespeare, to the Cadillac Asphalt LLC for an amount of six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, being the lowest responsive bid, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city.
I guess support. Anyone?
I'll support it.
Well, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we call the roll, is there any way, I believe we have Mr. Pangore, who was from K E W on the line, and I would like him to talk about this project a little bit and why, I believe in, it was, I could be wrong, it could be, he was in October, we actually voted no as a council against this. So if we could maybe hear his opinion, because he is our city engineer, on whether or not this is the best use of funds moving forward for repairing these streets.
Good evening. Mr. Pangore, are you on here?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Hi, how are you tonight? Thank you for being with us.
Wonderful, thank you. So, back in January, I was asked by the city manager to render our opinion on the resurfacing of not specifically the, the four streets that were bid in this project, but those four streets, plus I think there were five other street sections that Mr. Abraham had proposed to be resurfaced. They were streets that had a Pacer rating of one, two, and I think there might have been one that had a Pacer rating of three. We rate streets on a scale from one to ten, one being the worst, ten being the best. So these were streets that fell toward the bottom of the, of the pile, so to speak. Our, my opinion in that letter, which I stand by, is that essentially if, if money were no option, these streets need to be reconstructed. They, they were resurfaced with asphalt, I believe sometime in the nineteen seventies. There's concrete underlying them. They're, they're very distressed on the surface, which is an indication that the underlying concrete base is in very bad shape. I understand that city council authorized D P W Director Abraham to proceed with a, a project, a resurfacing project of these streets with an amount, a budgeted amount of no more than seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We were asked to assist him in preparing bid documents for a project of that size. In the spirit of cooperation, we sat down with Mr. Abraham. We went through and scaled back the project to include only the four street sections that were bid out. We also only limited the amount of base repair under those streets to ten percent of the surface area, which, which we believe we're going to find there's going to be more than ten percent needed, but we won't know that for sure until we mill off the asphalt surface. The, the ten percent base repair, based upon the low bidder's bid, represent a cost of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So if we see an additional ten percent or, or additional twenty percent of base repair needed, that would, each ten percent of additional repair is going to amount to about another a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar in cost over and above the price, prices that were bid on this project. We also eliminated the replacement of all of the driveways we, that we had put in our original bid. We're only replacing a select number of driveways that may be in the influence of a, of a repair that's in the street. So the, the project was scaled back. You know, again, none of us have X-ray vision eyes. We won't know for sure the condition of that underlying concrete surface until the roads are milled. Mr. Abraham and I have talked about how we can do that from a construction standpoint, so that we don't expose all four street sections and, and mill them all off initially. We talked about maybe milling two of them off, assessing the underlying condition, and determining whether or not we have enough budget to continue on with the remainder of streets. I am, I am very, very concerned with the stability of these four streets. They are in very, very bad shape. I certainly hope I'm wrong. I commend Mr. Abraham of trying to find a way to address these streets. As Mr. Curly indicated, they've been streets that have been in very bad condition for a long time. I know the city gets a number of complaints. I, if money were no object, I would say we're doing the wrong thing. We need to reconstruct these roads. But I'm willing to go along with Mr. Abraham and take these one or two streets at a time to see if we can get through them within the amount of money budgeted. I understand that if we find more base repair, then we anticipated or estimated in the bids that we would need to come back to city council and ask for more money.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mr., I have a question. Mr. Pangore, so do you, what do you think would be, how long do you think these streets are going to last?
It really depends upon how much effort we can put in repairing the base beneath it. So if, if, if we're not able to, to make the necessary concrete repairs underneath that asphalt, and we put new asphalt over top of broken concrete, we will see that those cracks in the concrete reflect through the brand-new asphalt in the matter of it, of two seasons, maybe even one winter season, we'll start to see those, those cracks reflect through.
Miss, I have a question for Mr. Blum.
Yes, ma'am.
How much do we have in the budget for this project?
We budgeted seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. We do have some access funds within local streets at this point. Yeah, I mean, I, I've been looking at this myself. We didn't add a contingency in this. Normally, we add at least a ten percent contingency, and there was nothing added into it tonight. And Mr. Pangore is correct. If we take the concrete and triple it, we're going to need another two hundred and fifty thousand or so. The local street funds can handle that. It's just a matter of, do we want to spend the money, you know, on this project at this time?
Mayor Proton, can I jump in on this question, too? Mr. Blum, well, I tend to argue with all councilor, I'd argue that this was budgeted. I don't believe it is budgeted. And actually, honestly, I don't believe this should even be on the agenda. We had discussed in January, as we said at the budget meetings, that we talked about doing reconstruction of the twos and threes. We never, as a council, voted on anything to resurface. And in the budget meetings, we did talk about it, but we never motioned to amend the budget to resurface anything. So that money should have been used to reconstruct, not resurface, is my understanding. And then this showed up on the agenda today. And so I, I, I mean, those, those roads are in bad condition. Nobody is, nobody's saying that's not the case. They are in bad condition. But I'm afraid, I guess, Mr. Pangore, you're saying so, yeah, and Mr. Blum, you're saying this, this probably will be a lot more expensive, right? Especially considering their Pacer two ratings. And like M Dot Zone, or this is the Michigan, what is it, the Traffic Asset Management Council, T A M C, they say if something's a Pacer two, you need to reconstruct, is the, is the suggested action. I'd rather not, we spend half the money and then they crack the next year instead of just doing concrete. I think concrete's worked a lot better, and then we can maintain it better, too, with like our, you know, we've been spending seven hundred thousand a year, roughly, or five hundred to seven hundred thousand to fix concrete on certain roads, so they don't get to a two or three Pacer rating. I just think that's the better strategy, instead of trying to Band-Aid the, the four roads. I know I feel very sorry for any residents on those roads, for sure, but I don't want to have to revisit them soon. I guess that's essentially my, my view on it.
Would leave that to Mr. Pangore, but I believe the amount to reconstruct just one of those roads would burn through more than the budget set aside for the resurfacing.
No, and I do under, I under, yeah, I understand it's probably roughly three times as much as what this was for. What, this is just under seven hundred thousand. It was probably two point, yeah, two point three, two point four million per mile we were talking about before, so.
Madam Mayor, my ma-
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Steve? Steve? I want you to answer this question like you would when I knew you twenty-seven years ago. Are we putting perfume on a pig?
If we don't spend the money to repair the underlying concrete to the, to the extent that it needs to be repaired, yes, we are. And we won't know that extent until we peel off the asphalt.
Well, once you take the ash, the ash, the asphalt off the concrete, and it's really, and it's really screwed up, then, then you're going to have to come back and get a lot more money.
You're committed. Correct.
Wow. Well, both council members brought up some good points, and, and I appreciate your, your honesty and your candor. So what have we got? We got, we got one of two choices, to delay this till we get more money. And, and we all know how bad particularly Roxanna is. If we can go out and start digging up, and if it's as bad as Steve thinks it might be, then we're going to be looking at another two hundred and some thousand dollars. Is that, is that, am I looking at that correctly? Am I exaggerating too much?
No, you're not. I mean, worst, worst, worst-case scenario, if, if the road completely falls apart once we put that heavy milling machine and construction equipment on it, then you're stuck reconstructing it. And you could be talking about three times the cost.
Thank you. I just have two things to point out, because, Mr. Pangore, you said, if we want to bid, it might be two four, two point four million. And we have about four bids that were under eight hundred thousand, right? So that, so that estimate was-
The two point five million, well, that was for nine streets. That was a, and, and as I explained, that included thirty percent of base repair. That included replacing all the driveways. It was a more inclusive resurfacing program than what we ended up bidding.
Now, Mr. Abraham, you're on here. No one's asking you any questions. And one thing about someone that works for the city of East Point, I love your work, Mr. Pangore, but I like to try to give the actual person that actually works for the city of East Point, because it's a difference between, to me, from someone that actually works for the company and actually a contractor. So, and Mr. Abraham is actually a city worker, so I would feel that someone who actually works for the city is not a contractor, would be the one that would see that the city saves the most money and things like that. So, Mr. Abraham, what do you have to say about some of the things that were asked to Mr. Pangore that wasn't asked to you that you might want to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first of all appreciate that you gave me an opportunity to respond. Now, Mr. Pangore painted a very alarming picture. Now, this is not the first time I am resurfacing residential street. As I repeatedly said at the council, I believe three times, in my career, I paved one thousand six hundred miles of streets. This is not the first time I am resurfacing a street. The street, the question we have, when it was paved the last time, a very thin layer of asphalt was used. That's why on several sections, you have seen that it just peeled off, because probably less than an inch, yeah, less than an inch thick of asphalt was used on concrete. That's why you have seen on several sections, it is being peeled off. What we are proposing to do is to remove or mill the complete asphalt over concrete and then put two to three and a half inches of heavy-duty asphalt. Now, second thing is, Mr. Pangore painted a very alarming picture. That could be a worst-case scenario. That could be a worst case scenario. Until we mill the street, we do not know whether these concrete bays have deteriorated to the extent that he has played. Or the council person was under the assumption that it could be so waste that it may need reconstruction. I do not think so, but then until we mill the street, we do not know. Had the street been deteriorated to the extent that Mr. Pangori said, or the council person Lucido, or Mr. Di Monaco is suspecting, the street would have collapsed already. And then my gut feeling is that there could be some crack repair or there could be some sections here and there that need to be repaired, no doubt about that. That's why we have budgeted ten percent already into the contract to do the base repair. Now, in case, a worst case scenario, if we need additional base repair, it is our intent to have the base repair done before we put any asphalt on top. So in case we have to put, let's say, ten more percent on all the street, additional base repair, that is going to cost us hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars more. Yes, so the question is where the hundred and thirty-five thousand is coming from? The answer is two. We have seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budgeted. Fortunately, the low bid is six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Approximately one third or one fourth of what Mr. Pangori initially estimated. Now, secondly, we have a fund balance of two point five million dollars in the local street fund. So, where's come where's, we can reprogram some part of that money and then add that or amend or add additional money to the contract and then take care of the additional base repair. Again, until we mill the street, we do not know. My gut feeling is that it is, it won't be that alarming as you are suspecting. Now, the third thing is, if we wait, if we wait any longer, that will be a wrong message we are giving to our residents. The property value will come down. Nobody will come and then buy any houses in East Point. And then it is giving a wrong message. If we wait to reconstruct these streets, as I conveyed earlier, it is going to cost us approximately two point six million to three million dollars, which we do not have. It to pave or to, sorry, to reconstruct one mile is going to cost us two point six million to three million. Our annual revenue from street fund, in the local street fund, is only eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars this year. And we are doing some of this work because we are transferring additional one million from major street fund. That's how we are pulling this through. So by differing this project or by not doing this project is a highly unjustifiable, unjustifiable thing we are doing to our residents. As you said, Mr. Curly, Councilman Curly, I'm sorry. Many, many residents call us, yeah, almost every day, asking for, when are we going to fix the streets? We cannot simply put asphalt or cold patch on these streets because it is beyond that. We cannot sweep the street because the asphalt is peeling off. So by doing something within our means, we are doing justice or we are doing something for our residents rather than doing nothing. We cannot afford to do nothing. We have to do something. And we have to do something within our means. And that is what I am doing as the director of the department who is responsible for the maintenance of streets. And then also I am getting innumerable number of calls and emails al- almost every day. And then, again, reconstruction is the best option, but we do not have the means to do. Now, since we are doing, since we are using heavy duty asphalt, my, my experience is that it will hold, it will not crack in the next year or after two seasons. I believe on that. I, that is what my experience states. I have done this for almost thirty years. So since we are doing heavy duty asphalt, my experience says that it will last. Since these are residential streets, the traffic is very low. The truck traffic is very, 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 very insignificant. So therefore, once we do a reasonable job, it should last at least twenty, twenty-five, thirty, or even more. That is my experience, uh, Madam Mayor and respected council. Again, I really appreciate you consider us to proceed with this work. Because again, if you don't do anything, that will be an unjustifiable thing we are doing to our residents.
Council?
Now, if I can jump in for a second, that was kind of one of my concerns because, uh, we don't have money to do the full reconstruction. My question, and, and Director Abraham addressed it already, was what happens if we do absolutely nothing? And I understand that resurfacing is not the best option, but if that helps temporarily, and that's definitely better than just sitting idle and letting the streets continue to get worse. I mean, you know, we may just have to make that sacrifice, even though it's not ideal. But, I mean, it seems like it's the, or it's not the preferred option, but I would hate to do more damage in the long run by sitting and doing nothing than, you know, just hopefully doing something that, best case scenario, it works out for twenty, twenty-five years, thirty years, so. But I'm glad he addressed that and, you know, that's pretty much all I had on it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind. I do believe that when we discussed this back in January, I think the idea behind it was to, these streets do need to be repaired, but was to come up with an alternative plan on not using asphalt, but maybe possibly bonding this out or going up for a millage to do some local street work in the city because there's a lot of local streets that need to be repaired. I know we did discuss it at one meeting briefly after that, and then with everything going on, I think it kind of got, you know, pushed, pushed away with coming up with maybe different options instead of doing the asphalt. Which I would, in my opinion, I would still be interested in, in, you know, looking into other options. Instead of spending the money on the asphalt and possibly where we could have used this money on starting to reconstruct some of these streets or starting our project to get even more streets reconstructed.
Anyone else?
Sure, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Abraham, I guess one comment, one question. The council will determine if we're doing a disservice to the residents or not. Please don't tell us that we're doing a disservice to the residents for if we go forward with this project or not. And second, how many of you wrote the sixteen hundred miles that you talked about were Pacer two, though? Because this is, I'm just going off, like, industry, I mean, this is state of Michigan standards here. Is that the suggestion, action is to reconstruct. If we do take that top part off, and we're only talking about ten percent repair, I mean, you can see the concrete base on most of these streets near the curbs. I mean, I drove through them all today. It's gonna be way more expensive than the seven hundred. So if we end up spending, you know, half as much as reconstruction, I think we should have just went for that then because it's gonna last so much longer. We won't have to revisit these roads. I'm sure everybody knows we have eighty miles of road. And we're just talking about one mile right now. So if we Band-Aid it for five or ten years, we can't visit it just ten years from now because we have seventy-nine other miles of local street road in the city. So, Mr. Abraham, how much was Pacer two that you resurfaced?
I don't remember the exact number, but then a majority of those streets were Pacer two or three, something like that, Pacer two, two to four, four to five, something like that. Even, even, even we resurfaced the street with no concrete base. Those are called Class C streets. There are two hundred and twenty miles of Class C streets in Detroit. We paved with asphalt several of those streets, even with no concrete base, and that are still holding good. And then, if, even if, let's say, on a worst case scenario, we have to do thirty percent base repair, which again, Mr. Pangori is suspecting. Or he is pulling that number with no basis, actually. We did not do a core sample. We don't know whether we have to do five percent, ten percent, thirty percent, forty percent. We do not know. Simply he is estimating that as an engineer. So even if, let's say, on a worst case scenario, we have to do thirty percent, that will still cost us additional two hundred and seventy thousand dollars more. So two hundred and seventy plus six hundred and eighty is still only nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is only one third of what we have to spend to reconstruct one mile of street.
Okay, well, I'd suggest if council does want to move forward with this, I'd highly, highly, I mean, I, I do not want to, but I'd highly suggest we approve like one, one of the four roads. Because if it does become very, very expensive, we don't want to have all four done at the same time and then it costs, you know, in the millions of dollars.
Madam Mayor, yeah, well, Steve, are you still there? Steve Pangori? You're still there?
Yes, I am.
All I, all I seen was a Michigan State helmet, so I thought maybe you went home. Yeah, well, would that, would, would that, not what you're gonna do anyway, is do one street at a time? Or could you do that?
Mr. Abraham and I talked about that earlier today. What we're gonna, what we're gonna request of the contractors is that we don't, we, we mill off no more than two of the streets at a time. I, I don't think that they would be willing to do one street at a time. It wasn't bid that way. And it would be, it would cost additional mobilization for their, for their milling crews.
Okay, so you would do, you could do two.
Yeah, I think we can convince them to do two.
I'm certainly, I'm certainly not gonna suggest which two of the four that you should do. You, you, you're better at that than I am. And you know what? All the discussion is great and right from the heart from every one of us. Because every one of us want to do what's right for the city. But, on the other hand, the concrete could be beautiful. It could be not, you know, it might be perfect, so we don't know. So, I'm ready, I'm ready to, thank you, Mr. Abraham. I'm ready to.
Yeah, I think you made your, your motion and you have support. We're gonna call the roll.
All right, I have, the motion maker is Mr. Curly and the seconder is Mr. Baker. Counselperson Curly?
Real quick, real quick, before we vote, are we, are we gonna, do we need to include that we're doing only two streets? Or we're gonna try to do only two streets instead of the four altogether?
Uh, no, Councilman, we are proceeding with the approval of the contract. Oh, sorry, we are recommending approval of the whole contract, that is for all four streets. But then what we suggested was, we tell the contractor to mill two streets and then we will see how bad the base, the base is, and then we will take care of that. And then if money is left, or if the base repair is reasonable or nominal or what we expected, then we will proceed with the other two.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna do two at a time. Okay.
All right, can I proceed?
Yes, please.
All right, counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson Di Monaco?
No.
Counselperson Lucido?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pangori and Mr. Abraham.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, council. Councilman Curly, thank you very much for understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you for AEW and again, the director of BPW for the research that they have done and also the council for also additional research. We're gonna go to, under new business, we're still on the, on new business. Item C, two, 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 zero, one, to two, 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 one, Kelly Road, the tech reverted commercial property. We're gonna start, Ms. Holman, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for coming out tonight. I'm gonna let you have the floor.
Okay, I am pleased that after two years that we have received a proposal for the redevelopment of, it's actually two, 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 oh, one through two, 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 one, Kelly Road by a business owner who is located two blocks away, who is currently renovating the former Snookers Bar and Restaurant. I, I know that the council has concerns about the definition of the word marketing or marketing in the resolution that the council passed. There's been discussions of listing this property with the Realtor. I have been discussing this property and promoting this property as, as well as some of our others and including some private properties that are for sale or leased in the city when I am approached by potential new business owners. Everything from, and as I explained to council, childcare to a veterinary on office, to law offices, to wellbeing, to coffee shops, things like that. And of course, due to the condition of this building that we purchased two years ago, July, two thousand eighteen, at this point, we have over a hundred thousand dollars invested between the purchase price, the clean out, the taxes that we have paid for two years. This week, I, this weekend last, four of the members visited the site with me. I will give kudos to, I hope to Cardi and myself, or Councilman Di Monaco and myself, because after Sunday's rain, both of us in flip flops did wade through ankle deep water that was rather green. He was more brave than I was. We have also, it's my understanding that the administration had approached at least one Realtor in the past about listing this property for sale and that Realtor would not return phone calls due to the condition of the property. I've had three people walk the property, three entities walk the property with me with the understanding that the cost of the renovations, specifically the total new roof that is needed, as I described it, a small plane has fallen through several parts. That the city was really seeking the investment in the property, the private investment in the property as opposed to, to a sales price. United Methodist Church, Habitat for Humanity went through the property with the understanding that, you know, for a dollar, they could put the money into the renovation of this property. Habitat needed to find new office space, did not have the time to raise the money, particularly with the, with the virus environment. They have fund new offices in downtown Mount Clemens. And most recently, I was approached by the owner of the former Snookers. He's actually on the meeting tonight. I'll introduce him. Did also have contact, remember our team, I contacted with a well-known Realtor today who said, in order to list the property with the Realtor, we would need to remove the mold, abate any of the hazardous materials and replace the roof. Because no, no, there's not gonna be no mortgage or financing available on this property. So this is really the first and, and only written proposal, written out architectural developments, architectural renderings, I'm sorry, have been provided. A budget was reviewed by the city team. The, you know, it, it's, it's, it is true that I think the best redevelopment plans are, are those of private investment and not taxpayer dollars. This current proposal is proposing to spend close to six hundred thousand dollars to white box the facility, which means a new roof, new plumbing, new electrical, checking the, initially checking the sewers and the drainage, because if there's three inches of standing water, other contractors have told me, and I apologize, Mr. Ramroo, but other contractors have told me we have an issue. He is going to, the included with the pack, it was a rendering, to convert this into four, four units at a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars. And then to approach businesses that already have brick and mortar locations, well-known in other cities. I'm not gonna give any trade secrets away, but also creating fifty potential jobs. So we have revenue coming in from four businesses and then new jobs. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think you would prefer to hear from the proposal, the, the gentleman proposing, making this proposal, his name is Troy Ramroo. He, like I said, is renovating the former Snookers two blocks down. I consider him to be, you know, a stakeholder in Kelly Road. Our team was impressed with the vision that he and his partners have for Kelly. Our team was impressed with the vision that he and his partners have for Kelly Road between seven mile and nine mile, um, the walkability. Um, obviously, there's, there's a lot of potential there. Um, I have asked Mr. Ramroth to also speak on his experience in, in restaurants and bars in the tri-county area and probably more. And I, I would like to note that our team has also appreciated, um, the creative vision and, and the passion that he brings to this project. Um, so, Mr. Ramroth, if you would, please introduce yourself.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Holman. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening, how are you?
Mayor Owens, thank you for having me, members of the council. I'm reading on the side here while I'm also speaking, guys, so excuse my eyes. Um, first of all, I'm really excited about, you know, um, I bought what was Snookers in last, the end of last year, and we've been on the process of renovating it um, into a new bar concept, restaurant and arcade. And my business, well, let me give you a background on me real quick. Um, I started off about twenty years ago at Lockroom Saloon in Utica. I have since opened Hamlin Pub, Chesterfield, CJ Mahoney's, Troy, Hamilton Room Birmingham. I built, designed and opened Grasshopper in Ferndale, Michigan, which made top ten in the world for the style of music. Um, I designed the first rooftop that will be built this year on Nine Mile Woodward, um, on the Woodward Corridor. I'm the owner of Detroit Massive. We're a hospitality management group that does, uh, we did the Dirty Bird BBQ on the Belle Isle with four thousand people. We do hospitality management for, uh, Gridlife yearly at Gingerman Raceway. It's twelve thousand plus over four days. My partners own Billio's on Seven Mile and, uh, Kelly. We're taking over the, what used to be the Charlie's property on Kelly. Um, I now own Snookers, we also own Exo Sports Bar in Sinclair Shores. Um, so that's a little background on, on me. Um, we're currently, you know, for this project, I, I foresee it as being, as making a more vibrant Kelly Road. It's, I'm sitting here on Kelly Road right now, and it's a beautiful neighborhood. It's very walkable, and I feel like there's, there's, there's nothing really here, um, for families. Uh, we're looking at four hospita, hospitality-driven, uh, based businesses. And, you know, I, I believe in synergy between businesses. So for instance, Big Daddy Games is what the new Snookers or old Snookers will be called. Uh, we won't be carrying a dessert menu made in-house. Our dessert menu will be coming from Giuseppe's down the street. And, you know, we will purchase anything that we can on the Kelly Strip, from businesses on the Kelly Strip, to greater build this strip of property between seven mile and nine mile on Kelly Road. Um, the location is ideal, the walkability is ideal. It's, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I'm really excited to bring, you know, four diverse style of hospitality businesses to this community. So, that's, that's where I stand on this building.
Also, have any questions for, um, Ms. Holman or, uh, Mr. Ramroth? Did I say it correctly?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question for Ms. Holman.
Okay.
Um, has this property ever been like, put out like publicly that we are even like interested in selling it, like to the public? Like, has it ever, I know you said that you've like word of mouth, like you have told people and asked people about this, um, property if they were interested. But has it ever been just like publicly put out there? I know like you, there was a real estate agent that was contacted, you said they couldn't list it. But just in general, the city was interested in selling it even without a real estate agent, like has that ever happened?
Um, I'm, I'm only aware of the time since I started in December. Um, and so in, in that case, it's, um, I don't know that we've like posted it on, on, on any social media or anything like that. Um, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Bloom can answer the question about the previous year and a half.
Yes, prior to you coming on board, um, myself and Ms. Van Heren had met a Realtor out there who dealt with commercial properties. We did a walkthrough. We exchanged information, and then he never called us and never answered our calls. Uh, basically, he walked away from it. That, that was the only interaction we've had with any Realtor trying to get it listed and on the market. Uh, but we, we knew it was in, in bad shape, and it was gonna be a hard sell, um, in an as-is condition. So, um, we, we've tried, but not that extensively. Not every Realtor handles commercial either. So you can't just go to your local RE/MAX and get them to list it for you.
Well, I think one of the other issues is the condition of the property. Because there are a number of, uh, including one completely entirely empty block of, uh, offices on Kelly Road. Um, but there's a number of, of buildings listed for lease or for sale, um, that are in much better condition. Um, and, and I know like even at the end of, or at the, just north of this property on the same block, the, the Papa John's has closed down um, and is, is picked up. So I think, um, knowing how long some of these other buildings have been sitting, um, wi- without any takers.
My other question, um, would be, um, is there any, is there gonna be anything in the contract to guarantee that the work is gonna be done before the sale of the property? Like, is there anything that's preventing him from turning around and selling it tomorrow for profit? Because I know in the, in the past, the city has had issues with that, so.
Absolutely, and, um, in addition to, um, phased deadlines and certain requirements, um, it's absolutely going to be a condition that the property can't be flipped, quote unquote. Um, but the property has to be finished before, um, anything can, can happen in terms of ownership. Um, and also, um, a clause that it would, it would come back to the city should anything like that happen.
Madam Mayor?
Sure, if I, okay, go ahead.
Curly, Councilman Curly? Councilman Curly?
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, first question, um, I think the conversation would be that there'd be about fifty employees that would be in, that would be hired. Is that close to being right?
Yeah, between all five businesses, there would be about, yeah, about fifty.
And would, would you, would you have the responsibility of, of hiring those folks? Or would that be, can you, can you direct somebody? What I'm gonna ask is, would every effort be made to hire qualified people from East Point before you hire anybody else from another city?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
It's very, it's very important that the community embraces what we do. And, you know, that, that's probably one of the main parts of it, is hiring people from within the community to make that happen.
Okay, uh, secondly, it sounds like, uh, when, um, Sarah asked the question about, was this advertised? It sounds to me like it's two years ago this month, July of two thousand and eighteen, is when the city obtained those six units. And it sounds to me like the council or s- city administration never officially talked about putting it out for bids officially. So that, and that has never happened. And I like to ask Randy a question. Randy, uh, we're paying taxes on that, we have been since July of two thousand and eighteen. Can you kind of run through that, please?
Um, sure, actually, I was gonna bring that up hopefully before the vote. Um, the taxes, uh, per year, um, so we would have, uh, bought the property from the county in eighteen. We would have paid the eighteen summer taxes, eighteen winter taxes. We paid the nineteen summer taxes and the nineteen winter taxes. If we do not sell this property tonight, there will be a fourteen thousand and forty-four dollar tax bill that we will have to pay, um, for the summer taxes on this property. Um, so I, I guess look at it as, yeah, he's paying us a buck, but he's gonna pick up a huge tax bill and take it off our books. So, um, it's, it, it really, I mean, for the amount of money that's going into this project, it's amazing. Because we, we didn't even wanna put a hundred thousand into a new roof, uh, so.
Well, yeah, thank you. So, we've paid a substantial amount in taxes, and, um, the bill is there for us to pay it this week as well. If we don't settle this, uh, tonight and sell it. That's right, that's all I have, the questions right now. I, I personally think that we need to move forward on this tonight and, um, sell it. And, uh, it sounds exciting of what's gonna be there. I think all the council members have been through there, and, uh, we didn't have to have a hazmat equipment on. But it sounds like Cardi and Kim almost had to, uh, yesterday. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll yield the floor right now, Madam Mayor.
Um, uh, Councilman, I think Councilman DeMonaco had wanted to say something real quick.
I'm done.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, for, yeah, I guess after I left, I probably felt like I should have had a hazmat suit on. But I'm, I'm still here, so, uh, yeah, Mr. Ramroth, thanks for coming out. And, uh, I, I think the drawings are really beautiful that are in our agenda packet, so I appreciate that. And, um, I appreciate you coming forward and, and submitting, um, some information to us and a proposal. Um, my, my thought here is just, uh, I think what Ms. Lucido was alluding at is, I'd just like to, and I hope, I hope you end up getting it, Mr. Ramroth. But I'd, I'd like to see that we do publicly just, um, offer up the property on, you know, our website, on Facebook, wherever we would normally do that, that this property is available and people put in proposals. And it's, you know, essentially put in a full proposal. Because if, you know, if anyone is willing to pay a dollar, I don't wanna be in some scenario where someone's gonna pay twenty-one dollars, and someone pays twenty dollars, and we give it to the person that's willing to pay twenty-one dollars. You know, we, I don't wanna get into that, but we should get people putting out proposals, uh, so that, um, we do offer it up to the public. And so that we follow the policy that City Council has very recently adopted. I mean, in the policy, we state that any, um, let's see, uh, anything we can, so the, the, what we're talking about right now is, or may market the property for sale as is with the new buyer completing the necessary renovations. Um, w- will be sold on the open market. I mean, we need to have this open, not just, you know, one discussion. Um, although I do appreciate it, and I hope you do come to, well, further come to East Point. I know you've already got a building here in East Point. Um, so that, that's my, uh, my thoughts on this. I don't even, we don't even have anything in writing on this agenda. So what, I mean, what would we even, if we approve this, we're not even, uh, we don't even have specifics on here.
Ms. Holman, um, Mr. Monaco, I'll just, Mr. Um, question.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, just, just, just two points of what Cardi had said. Number one, if we go out for bid, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow or Thursday, we have to pay fourteen thousand dollars in taxes. So if we go out for bid and somebody bids twelve dollars and fifty cents, we had just turned around and spent thousands of dollars to pay the taxes. And secondly, my point is that we've had this build, this units since July of two thousand and eighteen, and no one for a year, a year and a half, or two years was all excited about, we need to get, we need to get rid of this because we're paying taxes. So, everybody was quiet for two years, and yet we're, we paid a total amount of taxes that had to be paid. So, tomorrow, we're, tomorrow, Thursday, we gotta pay fourteen thousand dollars in taxes. And you're not gonna get a bid for more than fourteen thousand dollars on that. So, you know, there are circumstances that dictate what some government bodies have to do, and I think this is probably one of them.
Mr. Curly? Mr. Curly? Uh, if I could respond, if I could respond really quick to that, um, for the last few years, I have wanted to sell this building. I wanna, I wanna sell all of the, um, commercial real estate that the city owns. I've asked, um, administration, I believe, multiple times, even before Ms. Holman was, um, on council. I mean, putting out part of the administration. So this is not something that like council's just been like sitting back and not doing. Like, we, I, I have asked multiple times for us to put these up for sale. Whether it be up for auction, or, you know, come up with some sort of plan to be able to sell these properties, all of our commercial properties in the city that the city owns. Um, also, when it comes to the taxes, Mr. Blum, if we were to sell this, uh, property next week, or let's say in three weeks, let's say, if I'm not mistaken, the, the taxes would be prorated correct at closing? So we would get a refund, so we'd only be paying like the three weeks worth of taxes?
It depends on how the contract's written. Uh, right now, the plan is we're not gonna prorate it, and the new owner will pay a hundred percent of it. Um, but it can go any way. Uh, generally, in a, in a real estate closing, you would prorate taxes.
Um, council, any other questions? Uh, I think Mr. DeMonaco, I think Mr. Monaco had a question that you wanted to answer earlier. Is that right, Councilman?
Um, sure, I mean, I, I just, uh, how come we're not following our policy, I guess? I mean, that's, uh, that's all we wrote, an entire policy. And this is again, just like the last time we had a tax reversion agenda item, we're not following the policy that we have, or that we have passed.
Council, did you guys wanna, uh, make a motion?
Madam, Madam, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion and get it on the floor and see what happens.
Okay.
Um, I would move that, uh, we approve the sale of the property located at two, 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 zero, one, to two, 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 one, Kelly Road, parcel ID zero, two, point one, four, point three, two, point two, oh, eight, point zero, one, eight, to Troy Ramrobe and/or a related LLC for one dollar and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a purchase agreement that will include phase, uh, completion deadlines, a restriction on this resell property until renovated, and other safeguards for the city. And further authorize the city manager to execute any and all other documents related to the sale.
I'll support that.
Will you support it, please, pop?
Sorry, just be, before we go, just one more time, I guess all, all I'm asking that's different from Mr. Curly's, um, motion is that we just opened it up to the public for say, you know, forty-five days. I mean, hopefully, we'd still go forward with Mr. Ramroth's proposal if it was the best one. But I think we just need to offer this up to the public and it actually be public. Um, so that, um, that, that's the only difference. But I, I guess we'll, uh, we'll see how this goes.
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Oh, sorry.
So, right now, we're proposing, right, to sell, right now, this motion's to sell this property for one dollar to Mr. Ramroth.
Yeah, right, right.
With all these other, you know, phase completion dates.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, well, and I don't know how anyone here knows, maybe somebody would pay a little bit of money. Or, huh, you know, um, we don't know what other people's plans would be on Kelly. We're just essentially selling to the first person for a dollar this property that the city owns. I mean, it's six, right, it's six commercial properties, and, and we're selling, you know, we're, we're just selling it, you know, without the public or anybody, you know, any, anyone else having a chance to give it a shot. We could make, maybe someone would bid a hundred thousand dollars on the property. Um, knowing that in the long term, you'll make a lot of money on it. I mean, they, maybe they'd even demo and build something new. I, you know, I don't, I don't know how anyone here can say that's not the case, especially if, uh, we haven't, I, I don't know, how would anybody know that we even own this property? Yeah, we owned it for two years, but, Mr. Curly, how would you go about, like, if you were a commercial developer, how would you figure out that we owned it and we're looking to get rid of it?
Have you seen that property? I probably would be, probably would do something, now, I'm not gonna, never mind.
Madam, Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, real quick too, before we vote.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Monaco. I mean, I think his plans are fantastic, and I would love to see this redevelopment. I'm not saying I don't. I, I, we do have a policy in place, even if we open this up to some sort of, like, bid where people could, um, put their proposal in, on how, what they would do with the property if we sold it to them, and how much they would be willing to pay for it, even if it was a dollar. I mean, maybe someone would come in and propose putting a mixed use building there, which is what is in our master plan, which would then fall in line with our master plan and, you know, purchase it for, I mean, who's to say that wouldn't happen if the public didn't know that it, you know, that it's a for sale? I, I just, I, I don't wanna lose the opportunity to sell it to this gentleman. But at the same time, I think that we do need to have these publicly offered. Because that's what's in our policy, and I think that's what's gonna make the city look the best, instead of just selling it to people who approach us.
If I may, um, you'd be, you may be surprised, all of you. If I may, you'd be, you may be surprised, all of you, at the number of people who are very savvy about finding ownership. I have, I am constantly getting calls about the tax reverted homes that we have and people figure out that they're city owned and they come in and they want to buy them. Again, I think that balanced with the fact that there are so many properties on Kelly Road sitting vacant. The fact that we have somebody who's a stakeholder already on Kelly Road and wanting to invest is a blessing. We have a lot of buildings sitting empty. Many are for sale or for lease and many are not, they're sitting. So, I think that after sitting for two years, we're lucky to have such a proposal with someone with experience. Our cost for demolition and for somebody to want to come in and demolish and rebuild, the cost of demolition are going to be well over $100,000. Based even on our contract at 58 cents per square foot, we're looking at $67,000 just for the demolition. If you have the 8,342 square feet by 14 feet, and that does not include any of the abatement. And for those of you who have watched those asbestos tiles with the rest of us, that's going to be quite something. So, I, I think I'm interested in starting fresh with the new properties that are up for council's approval, coming in from the Macomb County Treasurer and working with those. But this one is, has just been sitting so long in the condition that it is that I think this is, this is, this is a good chance for the city.
Anything else, Council? Yes, motion and support, please call the roll, Mr. Fairbrother.
Councilperson Curley?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
No.
Councilperson Lucido?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item on the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask you a real big favor? Our next one is tech about the homes and it's probably going to be a long conversation, especially if I, when I get into the, how much are we getting, you know, what from the federal government. So, I would ask for five minutes so we can go to the bathroom.
Absolutely. I agree. We're going to take, actually, 10-minute recess. So, it'll be less than, yeah. Let's just be back by 9:15. Yeah, 10 minutes. Thank you. And we're back waiting for Mr. Baker to come back on.
I'm actually here, right here.
Sorry, okay. Well, we're back. Council meeting is back open and we are going to continue. We have Mr. Fairbrother, you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Doom?
Finishing up eating, but yes.
Ms. Doom, is she there?
I'm here.
Okay. And let's continue. Now, we're going to go to item D, tax reversion properties. And Ms. Hol, let's start this off with Director Blom, Finance Director. Mr. Blom?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
This is the list of the 2020 tax reversion from the county. They are only for closing on properties that are vacant if they are still occupied. Nobody is being kicked out of their home at this point. All of these properties are currently vacant with no water usage. There is one commercial parcel. It's a vacant lawyer's office just north of City Hall on Greshit. But the rest of them are either vacant lots or vacant homes. The county needs us to make a decision because they have deadlines. If we do not buy them, then they will auction them off. Any shortfalls at the auction will come back on the city. Basically, all costs have to be paid one way or the other. So, as we have in the past, we're making a request that we purchase these properties and then turn them over to our Economic Development Manager and let her do her beauty on these things and get them back on the market.
What, we have money in the budget for this, Mr. Blom?
We, yeah, we have a separate budget for tax reversion. We, we never know how much it's going to be. I think we put $450,000 in this year because you just never know. So, there is budget for it.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion?
Well, I was going to ask, did you guys want to discuss anything with him or you just want to, anybody want to say anything? Or?
Go with the motion. Go with the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sarah. Go ahead, Sarah.
Madam Mayor, I motion to authorize administration to proceed with the purchase of the 2020 tax-reversion properties within the city of East Point from Macomb County in the amount of $181,831.08 pursuant to Public Act 206 of 1893 and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the acquisition of these properties.
Support.
Will you support it? Please call the roll.
No, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I went out and visited all of these pieces of property on Sunday and Monday.
Okay.
And with this yes vote, and I'm sure it will be, we now have ownership. And while we could not go inside of the buildings, we don't know what they look like out inside, but we do know what they look like outside. And of all the property, there are four, there are four properties that need the grass cut. Now, look, four of them. And if somebody out there was a private citizen and they had their grass needed to be cut and they didn't cut it, we would cut it and charge them, I think, what is it, $100? Doesn't matter, 100, let's just say $100. So, we have a responsibility as a homeowner, as you speak, to get that grass cut. I will, I will call tomorrow and give you the addresses of the four houses that need their grass cut. And someone said that, well, Randy, you had said that all the houses are supposed to be empty. I dropped by one of them on Monday and as I pulled up in front of the house, the mailman came in and put mail in the box and there were three cars parked in the parking, the driveway. Now, but were they squatters or were they still there? I don't know. I didn't, obviously, I didn't go and knock on the door. But the main thing is, guys, we got to be due diligent and we got to be transparent and we got to be good citizens. So, I would expect, well, can't do it tomorrow, it's going to rain. But I would expect those four properties be cut by the weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Motion and support it. Please call the roll.
Mayor, if I could before, before we vote.
Yes, sir.
So, I, well, as we've discussed, I'm definitely in favor of this. I just want to make sure, Ms. Doom, are we going to follow our policy? Or are we going to be back in this scenario again where now we're coming, how homes are going to come back in front of us? Not just, you know, random proposals and not following our, what city council? It was a unanimous vote even on that policy. Like, what is going to be the case here?
Well, we would follow the policy, of course. What Ms. Holman brought before you is rather a unique circumstance. You've had quite a bit of turnover. There's been things that have been kind of dragging behind homes that have been deteriorating. So, this is a clean slate that we can go forward and follow that policy.
I mean, I disagree that it was a special case. I think it falls right into one of the cases in the policy, though. But I'm putting in right now that my $12 for the 12 properties, putting that proposal forward right now. But.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
All right.
All right.
Around 13 houses in East Point now.
Um, motion and support. Let's call that roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Curley?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item E, Commission Appartment, the Board of Ethics. Want to appoint them by mayor and each council member. I know this is something that Mr. DeMonaco put together. Did you want to, and you say you have a nomination, I just want those who are new to Zoom and council meeting, can you go over a little bit about it and what, you know, and things like that if you, you know, if you wanted to, just brief?
Sure. So, yeah, City Council recently updated the ethics ordinance. We added the ethics board back into the ethics ordinance we had at pre-2011 and we modified it so that each council member can appoint one person to the board. So, I was just putting my person forward. I think we roughly discussed everyone appointing their person in like July and August. So, hopefully, maybe by the end of next month, we'll have the five members. We each can nominate one and they just get hopefully confirmed by the rest of council. And then that's our five-person ethics board that can review any complaints that are put forward.
And then that's our five-person ethics board that can review any complaints that are put forward, you know, regarding the ethics ordinance. So, yeah, my, on the agenda here, I just, I have Ms. Mariuka Rothick, whose application is provided here and that is, that's my recommended appointment to the ethics board. So I would just move, we appoint Mariuka Rothick to the Board of Ethics with the term expiring June 30, 2023.
I'll support that.
Not gonna lie, with, I seen her before and I wish she was on the Arts Commission because she was, had so much background in arts. So, so hopefully she can still be a part of it because I know she, she marked that she wanted to be in the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. But hopefully she can still be a part of them and help them. But we have motion and support. Are we doing, I'm sorry, Ms. All right, are we doing, should we do every, are we doing individually or are we doing all of them together? How we, how are we doing this tonight?
It's however the council chooses to go forth, Madam Mayor.
You want, you guys want to do one by one? We just did Mr. DeMonico, Councilman DeMonico.
Why, why don't we just give everybody's name and just have one motion and that'll be it?
What do you guys think about that?
Madam Mayor, I have not had an opportunity to decide on who I want. I know we received some applications via email. I have not had the opportunity to call them. So I will not have my selection until the next meeting.
Okay.
So however you decide to do the other ones, it's fine with me, I'll support.
What about you, Mr. Curly, Councilman Curly?
Cardi, is that all right if we do it all, all at the same time or do you want it separate?
Oh, you mean what, delay my appointment until the next?
No, what I was saying was, just do this, you know, you have, do it, hold on, I, hold on. All right, hold on, let's, let's do it in order. Let me explain it. Okay, Mr. Monaco, what we saying is do it separately, like you just appointed someone and then we do a motion and support. Did you want to do it individually or you wanted all of us to say who we want to appoint and then we motion and support all of them at once?
I was, I was just proposing, we just appoint just my, my nominee tonight and then I figured, you know, in the next meeting or two, everyone else would add someone to the agenda.
Well, what if, what if we're ready tonight?
Well, if you're ready tonight, then sure, make a motion after. I think we could just do each person individually, it just seems.
Okay, all right.
Well, we got motion and support, call the roll.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
And Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Curly, did you want to go ahead and appoint someone today?
I do, Madam, I do, Madam Mayor, Lynn Tubin. Lynn Tubin has been a resident of our beautiful city, East Point, no better place to live for 45 years. Lynn Tubin.
Okay.
No, I would, I would move, I would, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired.
Who supported that?
This is just, well, I didn't make the motion yet, so I would move that we would, I would move that we appoint Lynn Tubin to the ethics board.
All for it.
All right, steal it from him.
Yeah, thank you.
Move and support it by Mayor Proton Lucino?
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the roll, please.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Okay, yeah, I have someone to. I read over a lot of good resumes. I would like to nominate Gary Sasic for appointment to the Ethics Board, or a motion that we appoint Gary Sasic to the Ethics Board.
I'll support. Okay, move and support it, please call the roll.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Um, tonight I'm going to appoint Michael Jones. He's been a resident for a while, does a lot of things with the children and teaches and has mentorship program here in East Point. So I would like to appoint Michael Jones with the Ethics Board. Work. Move and support it, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Okay, so we will put this back on the agenda for Mayor Proton Lucino, so she can have some time to go over the applications and also the resumes. Now, we're moving forward to commission appointments to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. Okay, February City Council, I'm just reading over it. In February, City Council appointed Alyssa Diavault for one year and she has submitted her application form to be appointed for the remainder of the term for two years expiring July 1, 2022. April Wazowski, hope I'm saying their names correctly. If I'm not, I apologize. They have very beautiful, unique names. Sandra Kukulas and Megan Wilson have expressed their interest to be reappointed to, for three-year terms expiring July 1, 2020. I think one person's name on here, it doesn't expire till 2022. Is that right? Ms. Do?
Sorry, I'm muted. That is what we have. I believe Mr. DeMonico had questioned some of those, those dates. Linda had looked through her notes to be sure that she was accurate and was looking back through the minutes to see if she had had an error. So, Cardi, is there anything that you believe that is incorrect on this?
Yeah, I had forwarded that all to you. So there, well, just in general, the commission has nine members and we offset them by a year. So there should only be three appointments up at a time. And yes, Ms. Wilson's expires in 2022 and the other three expire right now. So if renewed, go till 2023, essentially. To summarize.
Thank you.
I was looking at, um, a lot of, we had a lot of interest and there was a lot of potential in East Point, I'm happy to say. And I wanted to put on a point, Matthew DeJohn, he is, he has graduated from the Academy of Arts and he is currently working as an illustrator. And he used to help organize community murals back in San Francisco. So I thought he will be really, I know we talked about murals coming to the city of East Point and his time in San Francisco, San Francisco is so innovative and creative. And if he did anything for that city, just imagine what he can bring to our city. And so I would like to appoint Matthew DeJohn, last name is D E J O N G for Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission.
Are you not proposing to reappoint any of the members?
Um. Do I, I don't have to start there? Let me start with who I, I'm going to select, I guess. And then I am reappointing one person. And the reason why I was going to keep Ms. Diavault was because she has been overseeing the, isn't Ms. Diavault on here?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, this commission has only been one year so far, right? So these, these are the, all these members have only been on the commission for one year so far. This is, this is, they, they were all appointed to one-year terms when this commission was formed, correct?
Ms. Do? I'm sorry, I'm not absolutely certain.
Mr. DeMonico, is, that's correct, right? We, we started this commission last year?
Well, there, yeah, there essentially haven't really been any full terms yet.
Right, so there hasn't been any full term, so they've all only served one year. So that none of them, I mean, because I'm about, I know the only reason why I ask is I'm all about like adding new members and having members switch over. Members have actually even had a full term. Yeah, I guess that's, that's, that's the reason why I was asking because they haven't even really had an opportunity to fully serve out a full term.
I mean, I just want to see it. I just want to get other people chances from, not saying they didn't do a good job. I just seen a couple events that I wasn't, it kind of bothered me, especially with the diversity thing. I know it's called Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. And I know on the, one of the events that I was, I, I was, I attended, I just didn't like what I saw. I didn't see diversity, I didn't see inclusion, and I, and it bothered me. And so I want to, I want to see more of that, that's why we called it that. You know, for instance, we had a Black History Month event and I didn't, it wasn't successful to me. Also, I didn't see anybody really of that culture being a part of it and doing arts and crafts. And that bothered me. And I think it could have been a little bit of work there. And I just was disappointed in a lot of things that I saw. And if I'm going to appoint someone and I, and it's, you know, I want it to be the very best and I want them to give it the very best. And I, and I haven't really seen, seen as much as I know that I can see. And so I want to, I want to just try different people. And so also, if we kind of have arts and cultural diversity, I want to include Hispanics, I want to include the American community. I haven't seen those, a lot of those things done. And so, and I wasn't very impressed about a lot of things that I saw. And some of the things was very disturbing to a lot of the residents because even during the Black History Month event, a resident said they didn't have anything, I, I mean, it was probably one resident that, one or two residents that was there. And nobody of that culture there to, it, it, I didn't, I didn't like it. And I had people tell me they didn't like it and I was very bothered by it. Residents was bothered by it because they didn't know about it. I just didn't like it. So I just think that going forward, I want to try new people and see where it goes. I think that's fair. I think in the last couple of commissions, you know, council have selected the same people over 10, 15 years and we have not, never gave people a chance. I'm still disappointed about that, but we have to move forward. And I think if the residents express something to me, I need to take, take action and a lot of things that I see and I, and I saw a lot of things that night. And I have seen a lot of other things. So I was just, I was just disappointed in what I, what I've been seeing. I haven't seen any diversity. I haven't seen, I just haven't seen a lot. And, and if you're going to do something as a family town, we have to include everybody. And also include, you know, council and the mayor and be respectful. And I haven't seen a lot of that with some of the commissioners and it, and it really bothers me. And so if I'm going to appoint someone, it's going to be someone that's new, someone that fits the, the vision of where East Point is going. And, and that's what I, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking about, Ms. Lucino. You were at the, you were at the event, what did you think about it?
Um, no, I, I agree that the event could have been probably better publicized. There wasn't a lot of public there. But I also, it was the first time they held the event. It's a new commission. It's only been together for a year. I feel like they're still kind of working out the kings of starting this commission up from the beginning. And I do feel like they've gotten a lot accomplished over the last year. Now, I've only been the liaison for the, on the commission for a few months. So with COVID, obviously, everything that they had planned has been canceled, which is out of their control, with the exception of the mural on the side of the bank that's going to be happening. That is, I believe that it's, you know, still happening that they kind of coordinated. But I just think that it's not, I, I agree. I like the idea of having these commissioners change and not having the same commissioners on commissions for 10 years. I agree with you. But these commissioners have only been on there for a year. So I don't feel like, I mean, this is just my opinion. I, I don't think they've had the opportunity to full, serve a full term to be able to, you know, really get anything accomplished.
And I would like also that the, the commission be more diverse. You can have Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission is not diverse, right?
Which Black History Month event are we talking about?
Um, the, at City Hall. You were there, right? Remember?
Yeah, are we talking about the MLK's speech that we, that we rehearsed?
No, we're talking about the whole event itself. We're talking about the people who came. We're talking about the people who helped with the event. That's what I'm talking about.
And you're saying that, that crowd was not diverse, you're saying?
It wasn't a crowd, that's the problem. It's only one family that came in, one or two families.
Uh, I don't think that's true, but I mean, you, one, you also left early too, right? So.
Well, if I may, Mayor, I, I mean, I, I realize, I agree, there wasn't a lot of families there, but this was the first time the city ever hosted an event like this. I think that it's something that would, is definitely going to grow if the city continues to hold these events. I mean, I think word of mouth will get around and more people will, you know, attending these, these events. I know like the other event, because it was a beautiful day, like when they hosted the Shamrock Day, had a very, very large turnout. And, you know, it's, it's hard in the winter. A lot of people don't want to go out in the winter. You're not going to get the same turnout. So I don't know if I can really blame any of the members for that directly. I, I, I mean, I don't think I could blame the members for the turnout on a, on a winter event like that.
I won't just blame them for the turnout because you can publicize a lot of things and you can still have a bad turnout, you know. My background in giving events and stuff like that, I have experience in that, in marketing. But what I'm saying is how you market and who is your target audience. And I think we, we did that. I don't think we included anybody, you know, any minorities, anybody that is part of that culture to help with that, to help with the.
Let me ask a question. There are, how many members on this board right now?
Nine, did you say, Mr. DeMonico, Councilman?
Yes.
There's how many now?
Nine.
Nine.
There are nine members and we're, and we're being asked, you're being asked to reappoint four of the nine?
Just three.
So is there anything, is there anything in the, our ordinances that you can't add a couple other people? I mean, if you can add a couple more people, we do what the recommended says, a, a point that folks are on here now as to what they're requesting. And then, Madam Mayor, if you want to add two more people?
It wasn't the thing of me adding, I mean, keeping the people. I didn't want to keep some of the people. I wanted to get new, new people on it because they didn't get a chance to be on the other commissions because council kept the same people on other commissions. And so I'm trying to open it up to new people to have a chance to express themselves and be part of this community. I don't think we're doing that.
And then, and then next year, if we, if we go along with that, these people were there for one year and we don't like them, we can dismiss them too? I mean, can we do that every year? Dismiss anybody we went to after, after only serving one year?
I don't know, their time is, their time is up. We're not dismissing people. Their time is up, just like any other commission. When their time is up, either we keep them or we replace them. You've been doing this since you've been Councilman, you know? That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Curly, if I may, it would be a three-year appointment. So there, the, the three people we appoint tonight, their term would expire July 1 of 2023.
Okay.
Well, if I can, if, I was at the event in February and I participated in it. I was asked probably several weeks at least before the event took place, I brought all four of my children with me. I had a good time, learned some things that I didn't know, experienced some things I didn't know. We did the drum circle, they had the arts and craft table. I have an experience to, I, I've, I've experienced volunteer work as well and sometimes I've had the same experience of good turnout, bad turnout and, you know. But I wasn't displeased with the event at all. I, I was there pretty much from start to finish. You know, my opinion is that if it didn't, if the turnout wasn't as good as we wanted, you know. what do we do to make it better the next time? And I just, you know, I think that if they're given the opportunity that they can maybe do some things differently, that they might not have done this, this time in the way of advertising or getting out word of mouth or whatever. But, uh, I thought it was very, I, I know the, uh, the speech that we gave was very diverse group up there, uh. So I, I met people, I met residents that I had never met before, and, you know, I had a great time, so I was very pleased with it. Uh, so, but I know we have to make a, a motion, and, you know, as far as, oh, you make a motion, you nominate somebody, and then we either support or we don't, depending on what everybody feels. I just wanted to give my perspective about the event, um, and they've been very good about informing me of different things that they have going on, uh, the end of the year potluck. And, uh, so I, you know, I don't know if anybody else got those same notifications, but I did. And, uh, you know, that's just pretty much my two cents. Um, you know, some residents told me that they have known about it, they said it was in announcements, you know, so. After only one year of service, you know, I, I think, I would like to see them, uh, continue on, but, you know, it all has to come down to a vote, so that's it, that's my two cents.
Uh, uh, council members, have to say anything? You all go through the applications, board of, um, board of commission applications for other people? Or you just stayed on three people that we already had? Hello, anybody there? I know you were on the moon, the Mr. DeMonaco, but everybody else? Um, anybody look at the other, uh, board and commission applications?
I, I have reviewed all the applications, and I'm not going to deny that there's not other people that are qualified. That's not, um, my reasoning, from my opinion. I, I, I think there are, and, um, you know, after people have served their three years, I would definitely be willing to look at those. And I also know that, um, hopefully, some of them might be interested in applying for beautification, because we're gonna have a bunch of seats open over there on some renewals also, so, um, we should be doing that hopefully next month also.
So now, what I will do, since, I mean, I still wanna appoint new people, but, um, but I did, like, like I said, I did like that he's from San Francisco, he does murals. He has, uh, he's graduated from the Academy of Arts, and he's working as an illustrator. So, um, I don't know if you guys looked at his, um, application form? Or not? So I know, out of the, out of the three, that's one of them I want to appoint. Well, I mean, if you guys wanna have a long night, because I don't think I'm a, I'm not reappointing all three of them, so I don't know how that goes. And I don't want the residents to sit here and we are looking like, what's going on? So. You guys wanna table this and move on? Going to, um, G, introduction to first reading ordinance number one-one-nine, and man, chapter twelve, article seven, tattoo parlors.
All right, Mayor, I'll move, we introduce and give first reading ordinance number eleven ninety-nine, version one, uh, which would amend chapter twelve, article seven, tattoo parlors, and schedule the ordinance for second reading and consideration for, for adoption at the City Council's August eleventh, twenty twenty regular meeting.
Support.
More than supported, please call the row.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, next item was added by Councilman DeMonaco, a joint planning commission and city council. We're setting the date today, correct, everyone?
Well, so I tried, um, I don't know, Ms. Doom, I, I figured if, if this was actually motioned at the, uh, planning commission, um, we had originally done April thirty, and then of course, of course, COVID hit, and then I think July thirty was the next month, um, that had five Thursdays, because that's what they're trying to schedule. I couldn't find it in the minutes. Um, I was looking again during the, you know, our break. Um, so I don't recall where we were at with this, and I, I don't see any emails about it either, and I cannot recall if we did actually schedule it, or if I just had a TBD in my calendar.
Well, I know it's not on my calendar, because I'm taking a look at it right now, so that might have been discussion that didn't go past the discussion phase.
Okay, so.
DeMonaco, um, I may?
Sure.
I, I know we had one scheduled in the spring that was canceled due to COVID. I don't remember ever rescheduling it, so I, I don't have anything on my calendar either.
Okay, I mean, I, I think we should, I think the planning commission did want to schedule one though. Um, so we probably should, because they'd like to talk about the master plan and how we can continue to move forward on different pieces of the master plan, and we'd be able to discuss that then.
Um, real quick, real quick, because I've worked with the planning commission for a long time. Um, is there any way, you being the liaison, you can add that to their next agenda? Have them propose a date to us, and then you propose it to council, because they have a lot more members, so it's a lot harder for them to get a date together than it is for, you know, for the five of us.
Good. Yeah, Ms. Doom, can we add that to the planning commission meeting then?
Sure, ma'am.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And then, that probably would be by Zoom, right?
Yes, sir.
More than likely.
Yes, sir, you got it. Next item on the agenda.
Real quick though, while we're still on this agenda item, speaking of Zoom, because we're gonna schedule a Zoom meeting with the planning commission, um, is there any way we can just have a quick discussion about our August meetings doing Zoom, or would that be inappropriate? Because it's not really quite on the agenda.
Probably under, under council comments, you can bring that up.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Mr. Curly. Now I'm gonna pay rolls and, um, Ms. Lucido?
No, go ahead.
Payrolls and bills.
Madam Mayor, motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million, seven hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Court.
More than supported, please call the row.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, now we're, the second hearing of the public is now open, let me get my phone so I can time everyone. Thank you all for still being here and staying with us. I appreciate that. Let me go to the timing on here. Okay, Mr. Fairbrother, it's on you.
All right, we have Chef Lex up again.
Okay, how you doing again, Mr. Lex? You are on.
Uh, can you hear me, yo?
Yes.
Okay, see, you told me right now, you, you wanna go public, so I'm about to start eating. But okay, uh, actually, I just wanted to say about the buildings, um, I believe, like, you know, when you, you raise in the city, and you see a lot of abandoned buildings. Uh, one less building that my daughter and my son can get snatched up and then get raped or murdered, or some stuff like that, is better. That we do something with these buildings right away. So if somebody's putting a vision together, and, and, and they already own something in our neighborhood, and like he said, it's, it's gonna be employees, uh, and they're gonna start with East Point residents, that's an awesome thing. And I'm a chef as well, so if the young man needs help, you know, let him know, holla at me, Mayor. Chef Lex here to save the day, you know? Uh, secondly, um, it was a remark that Cardi made about, uh, I think Mr. Abraham saying that he, he was doing distaste to the city. I don't think he meant like a direct attack to you, Cardi, or, or the table. I think what he was saying was to make the right choices on our roads, you know what I mean? Like, I, I, but I get it, like, if we spend a lot first, maybe that'll help along the line. But if we can save some money right now and do a better pass job, you know, and not a shoddy pass job, I think that's what, that will probably help better. I think that's what he was trying to say, like, let's do a better pass job, and not like a weak one, like we did last time. Let's do a bit, you know what I'm saying, instead of using a Band-Aid, use a, a, you know, a crutch, because I need a crutch, not a Band-Aid, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, instead of spending millions right now, let's spend a little bit, and hopefully, it, it, hope to God that it works. Um, because I guess that's what helped the city, right? Um, but, uh, I think, I see a lot of back and forth with you guys, and it's kinda the, it's kinda, uh, what I say, it makes, as a resident of East Point, it makes it uneasy to know, like, this is how our city is being ran by a bunch of back and forth, and, and everybody fighting with each other. I mean, it's not really, like, if you're grown, you can see it, you know what I mean? It's, it's not cool. Um, and Cardi said something about, uh, Councilman Cardi, excuse me, sir, um, you said something about, uh, the policies.
I understand, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, um, but he said something about our policy that is not the policy to be, uh, uh, you know, pretty much something that y'all wrote the policy on, now you're going against it. But listen, I believe that my tax dollars pay police, but police are killing brothers and sisters in the street and getting away with it. So let's not talk about policies, you know what I'm saying? That's what goes a long way, let's just get this stuff done, if somebody's willing to help us right now, let's make our city beautiful. We probably go to rural.
Thank you, sir, time is up.
Okay, and I apologize about that, but real quick, we go to other cities to enjoy ourselves, right?
I, I can't give you another additional, then everybody else on one additional. We follow policy, remember that, look, so.
Isn't it, yeah, but sometimes policies, we have to crush them to do, get the job done. Oh, I'm sorry for speaking.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Fairbrother, you have anyone else on?
Y- yes, uh, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak. Ms. Rayford?
Yes, Ms. Rayford. I wanna start to she's on.
Um, okay, I am an East Point resident. Um, and I have three things to talk about. One, the property should never have been sold without a public listing. It could be challenged in court, and that's gonna cost the city even more money. Two, I've written all of you about this before, and apparently it didn't matter, but choosing your own person to, uh, sit on an ethics board is like choosing the fox to watch the hen house. Three, regarding the appointment of commissions, the last time I checked, according to the charter, it is an appointment based on the council's vote, not one person's disappointment. I am totally disappointed about a lot of things that happened here tonight. And I'm especially disappointed in the fact that no one is regarding the residents. I've said this before, and I say it again. You were elected by the people, and the people can make some changes. You need to start thinking about the people of East Point and not your own personal agendas. Let's get this right for the citizens and the residents and the taxpayers of East Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rayford. Anybody else, Mr. Fairbrother?
Yes, Mariuka Rafik would like to speak, and has her hand raised?
Yes, ma'am.
He's trying to be a dictator. Making decisions, and it won't, it won't even put a vote on the floor.
Mariuka, can you hear us?
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was having technical difficulties, I apologize. Um, I, I am, I'm diverse, I'm the art and cultural diversity, um,
I'm gonna pause it, I'm gonna pause my time so we can, so we can hear you clear. I don't wanna use up your time and we can't hear you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, okay, I mean, um, can, can you hear me any clearer now?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I, I was drugging, I'm, I'm not coming, I apologize.
I'm sorry, we can't, no. Um, I know it's a way you can type something up, right, and, um, we can read it for you if you want to.
Um, okay, if there's somebody else that's behind me, I'll type mine up.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Mr. Fairbrother?
Y- yes, there's a Galaxy Note Nine who has their hand raised. If someone ever has the Galaxy Note Nine, if you'd like to speak, the floor is yours.
That's me, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Cassandra Ford, and I live on Juliana in East Point. And I wanna thank the city for getting that street behind me, which is all eight mile, worked on and getting done. I really appreciate that. Everybody in my neighborhood appreciates that. But there are a couple of things I wanna bring up. One is I had a friend of mine who had a fire down on Juliana, uh, further down, and, um, she called the fire department, and everybody in the neighborhood's called the fire department. It seemed like it took them a long time to get there. And when they came, they had to work with the fire hydrant, they were having some problems. And I wanted to know, is the fire department checking on these fire hydrants in the neighborhood to make sure that they operate, that they work? And then, two, the second thing I wanna talk about is that I was looking for some kind of activity that was culturally going on in East Point, especially around the wintertime, around African-American history. And I couldn't find it. And so I'm really upset that everybody was talking about this event was going on, and I didn't know anything about it. In fact, I had came to city council one time, even suggesting that we have something like that done. So I do believe that the people that's on that commission may not be doing as much as they could be doing to get the information out. Um, and the other thing, well, I guess that's it, I'm done.
And thank you for participating. Continue the participation, Ms. Ford, and please, um, those issues you have, can you email E as in egg, D as in dog, O, M, at eastpointcity.org? And I apologize for not, for you not knowing about what's going on in the commissions, and we will do better as a city and all that we do. We all have to do better, we learning still. Um, we have anybody else, um, Mr. Fairbrother?
Yes, Addie Richardson would like to speak. Addie, can you hear us? The floor is yours.
Yes, and thank you again. This is my first experience, and it's a lot of things that I, uh, see. And, uh, some of the things I don't quite understand, being a, uh, people for the city of East Point, a lot of back and forth and, um, mockery and knocking. But one thing I noticed was the street, and especially when he was talking about the streets getting done. One of those streets are mine. And our neighbor, my neighbors on this street, we call. If that lady said that they get a lot of calls, they do. He does, because we call constantly about our street. And then I see how you look at our street as if, you know, that's something that cannot, all the other streets are done. And we're the last ones and can't get it done, and I don't understand that, because I'm paying my taxes. Uh, in fact, you get them before I do. And, uh, but I don't understand that, but, uh, please don't forget about the water, my basement's bloody, and, uh, I will continue to look, because this is strange to be on here. And a lot of you forget that the people can see you, and they can definitely hear you, and they can, you know, nobody's a kid on here. And, uh, some of the things that you're doing is not professional. So again, I thank you for the opportunity, and I will check in again. And I will be calling about my water and my basement flooding, and thanks again, council and mayor, appreciate you.
Oh, thank you, thank you for your comments and your, and your positivity. Um, and keep coming, keep coming. Um, next, uh, please, Mr. Fairbrother.
I think that is everyone at this, oh, um, uh, we do have another speaker, Alyssa. Um, Alyssa, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. Um, so my name is Alyssa Dieboldt, and I wanted to introduce myself, mostly to the residents who are commenting um, in the chat, asking some questions about the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. I was one of the members who was up for reappointment tonight that was not, um, executed by mayor and council. Um, to answer some questions, our group is diverse in a lot of definitions of the word diverse, and diverse is not one thing. So I wanna make sure. So I want to make sure that people know who's on the commission. So right now, the nine members, there are three males and six females. We have retired teachers and current teachers. We have queer people, we have people of color, and we have self-employed people or traditional employment people. So I do believe that what we, what our group is currently is diverse. Could it be better? Could it be improved? Yes, absolutely. But I appreciate the comments made by council to allow this new commission that was started in 2018 to, you know, try for a full term. I do think that there are commissions in the city where people are reappointed in appro, for inappropriately long lengths of time. I don't think that a commission that was started just two years ago is near, anywhere near that yet. Additionally, for comments made about our cultural spotlight event in February, I delivered over nine hundred flyers to every single, um, K through eight school in the city. Um, it was in the CNG, it was on our Facebook page, city's Facebook page, and the city's website. We are a group of volunteers. We only get a thousand dollars to spend over twelve months. So please caution with, go with a little grace when you're criticizing a commission that is volunteer-run with a very limited budget and dealing with a variety of issues. I mean, we are heartbroken that we've had to cancel all of twenty twenty events because of this pandemic, but it's in the best interest of the residents to do so. And it, you know, it sucks, but that's where we're at. So I wanted to address the concerns that were brought up by residents in the chat. Um, you know, we're on Facebook, City of East Point Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, and I'd be happy to take any phone calls from any resident that would like to talk about what the commission has done and would like to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? Um, Mr. Fairbrother?
Madam Mayor, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay.
There's someone waving their hand in the video, uh, Ms. Wanda Moody.
Ms. Who?
Wanda Moody is her name. I see her waving at the camera.
Yes, my, yes, I have my hand raised as well.
Oh.
Okay, let's go with Ms. Moody.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? This is my very first time being a part of this, um, this meeting, actually, even before the Zoom. However, I, I have to support what the young lady just said a moment ago, that whenever you're starting, uh, something new, it's very hard to get very successful, uh, results at the very first time. And due to the fact that the pandemic came in, so I, I have to say I would support, and this is no disrespect intended at all. I would have to say I would support giving them an opportunity to continue doing what they're doing to be more diverse, reaching out more to the community. Now, she did mention the fact that they do, they have things on Facebook and different ways that they were getting the, the community involved. I personally, I, I didn't know anything about it. I don't have any children in the schools, so I wasn't getting anything delivered to me from the schools. My belief is, is that if they can, if the, uh, politicians can hit the pavements when they're running for an office and drop off literature to your homes, when they're not campaigning, they should be able to do the same thing to get the information out to the people. Now, is that the, is that the best way to solve it? I can't say that it is. But there has to be a better way of marketing certain things that is happening within the city, so everyone have an opportunity to know about it and be a part of it. Because I, I didn't, I didn't know anything about it. I didn't hear anything about it. And just because I don't have kids in school don't mean that I shouldn't have been notified of it some way. What's the way? I don't know. I would have to think and, and ponder my brain to figure out a way to give some suggestions to the committee. But I have to admit, along with, um, Councilwoman Sarah Lucido, that just because they did it for one, one year or two years, that's not enough time. You have to give individuals enough time to show that they can be successful. That's just my attitude. And then my next thing I would like to know, could anyone, uh, share with me, and then maybe you, you guys have discussed this before, I don't know. But what is actually happening on Nine Mile with all of this construction on Nine Mile?
Uh, we will respond after the, after the, um, meeting, a mayor council report, ma'am, not during the hearing of the public.
Okay, well, thank you. Like I said, I do apologize not being out of order.
Who's not?
I've never been a part of this before, so I do not know the, the, the way things are done. So I, I appreciate you sharing it with me, and, uh, I will be on more often, become more involved, and be more volunteering, doing whatever needs to be done with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Maybe you should have signed up for the Arts Commission. Thank you. Uh, we have someone else?
Yes.
Oh, let me, um, pause it and let me reset it. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
How are you? Thank you.
Good. Um, this is my first time attending a council meeting, um, be a Zoom or in person. I, um, have a concern. I, I emailed the city about my property, um, that's, uh, well, my next door neighbors, they have tree, three trees that are encroaching on my property. And the branches are falling, almost got killed by the trees. And I emailed you, Mike, and I think it's Van Heren, I'm not sure of her first name, um, on the twenty-fourth of June. And I haven't heard anything. And I'm just wondering, how does the city go about addressing, um, codes, code enforcement? Because I've, um, lived in a city almost three years, and I've been complaining about the same property for almost three years. And then I got a notice from the city saying that I had weeds and that I was going to be fine. And then I had to flag down the code enforcement officer and have them come in my backyard, take pictures, and nothing has still been done. And like I said, now parts of the trees are falling, and these trees have to be at least a hundred feet. And so I need some relief, because somebody's going to get killed in my backyard, me or my kids cutting grass, beautifying the backyard. I just need to know what is the protocol and who does the city, um, enforce the code enforcement? Do they just randomly select, um, residents to send notices to? I also heard, I think his name is, uh, Mr. Curly, saying that the city has to be good citizens and, um, cut the properties that they have acquired, the grass and things like that. Well, what about enforcing it for the residents? And what about responding to the residents that send emails and pictures to the mayor and to, um, code enforcement?
Oh, ma'am, we don't respond to afterwards, I'm sorry. That's why. Yep. Did you hear me, ma'am?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We don't answer your questions until the end.
Okay.
And I didn't want to take all your time up. Did you have, um, anything else you want to say? Didn't want to interrupt you.
Well, that, that, that's a main concern of mine.
Okay.
So I, I don't know the protocol. This is my first time joining the meeting. And, um, thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, please continue to talk, to speak and stay on to, you know, the end of the, the meeting. I appreciate you. And everybody that, that came and, you know, first time and everything, that's why I always try to explain things over at each, each meeting, because it's new to a lot of people. And I'm glad that more people are getting involved in their community. So thank you all so much. Do we have any more on the, um, hearing of the public that wants to talk, Mr. Fairbrother?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I do want to say just one more thing. I heard something about a beautification committee. Do you all still have that?
Yes, ma'am. Um, you will go, you can, um, uh, we'll talk about that. I'm gonna write that down, and I'll talk about that. Well, I'm gonna make it sure. How about that? You can go online, and anybody that's, um, want to be a part of commission, you can go online and apply online.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We want to be a part of and serve the community. Anybody else, Mr. Fairbrother?
Yes, T. Collier would like to speak.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My question is, are you guys doing, is the city of East Point doing anything about the high infestation of rodents? There's a horrible rodent problem in East Point. So what are they going to do about that?
Sorry, ma'am. After the end of a mayor council report, we respond to, um, some of these questions. And also, a lot of these can be forwarded to our, uh, city manager at E as in egg, D as in dog, O-O as in orange, M as in Monique, at eastpointcity.org, edoom@eastpointcity.org. And if she, um, doesn't get in touch with you, you can also email me in the council as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Was that all, ma'am? We had a?
Yes.
Little bit more time, okay. Thank you. Mr. Fairbrother?
I believe that is everyone now, because the Galaxy Note Nine already spoke, and T. Collier already spoke, so I see no more hands raised.
Okay, thank you, everybody who participated. And the first and the second hearing of the public, it's important to, for us to listen to your concerns and, um, and address them, either during the council reports, um, our city manager is on, on the Zoom too. So a lot of, of the things you said, she's writing them down and, uh, finding answers and, um, to your questions as we speak. And if you have any additional, uh, concerns, please email us. You know, a lot of people still don't want to, um, come to the, um, city, city hall and things like that. But please email us and, um, and call us as well. Go to our, um, our website as well, find the number in our email addresses. And, um, and sometimes when you do email us, we, we, um, we forward it to our, uh, our city manager. I know I always do. And so, um, and you, and she usually responds a hun, a hundred percent of the time to your, uh, emails to the right, uh, person. So let's continue to do that, and thank you again for, uh, for staying with us and, um, chiming in. Um, next is mayor and council reports. We are going to start with, um, our mayor, Paul Tim, Sarah Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, first of all, there's a couple of things I would like to first start out by thanking. Um, you met a mayor and the city manager for attending the groundbreaking over at Deerfield. Um, I was out of town, so I was unable to attend, but, um, I'm really excited about the project. Really excited. This is a great opportunity for young families to be able to own their own home in East Point. So, um, I'm really, really excited for the project. Um, the other thing is, I would like to thank the police department for hosting their cleanup they had on Monday. It looked like they had a pretty good turnout, and I heard that Mr. Curly also attended, so I would like to thank Mr. Curly for attending. Um, beautification normally does a fantastic job, but, but this year, it was, well, the city was shut down, and everything was closed down when they usually have theirs, because it's at the end of, it's during, you know, Earth Day in April. So they were unable to, uh, host it this year. And we should really end up probably planning them multiple times throughout the year, because the trash does build up, like, really fast, and so more organizations that we can get to host these projects and get the word out there that we're doing it, I think is always fantastic. Um, to the gentleman that had mentioned about us kind of like bickering back and forth, um, I appreciate your comments. Um, I respect every single person's opinion that I sit up here with. Um, if we agreed on everything, I feel like we wouldn't be doing our job. You know, we, we, we are here to express our opinions and to get all the different options out there. We're not always going to agree. It's, it's, I, I don't mean any disrespect to anyone that I'm sitting up here with, with. Um, I agree, I will vote with some people sometimes, and different people the next time. I mean, it's, it's going to switch back and forth, and that's just how, how it goes. But I respect everyone that I sit up here with, and I respect their opinions. Um, I think the only other thing I had was... That's it. I hope everyone's burying the heat, um, it's been so hot. Hopefully, everyone's doing well. I would like to thank all of the new residents that joined tonight. I've seen a lot of new faces on. It's always exciting to see new people getting involved. I'm, I think every single meeting, we have a few new participants, um, on these Zoom meetings. Um, the public really seems to be getting the hang of joining, um, via Zoom, so that's exciting. And the only other thing I wanted to mention real quick was with the rest of council, um, is moving forward in August with Zoom meetings. Um, if that's what the consensus of council would want, um, is to continue Zoom as long as the state of emergency and the state of mission is going on, then I think we should, um, move forward with Zoom. That's all I have this evening, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And by the way, I gave you your props at the Aaron Park Project, because I know before I came here, you were a part of that project. So I made sure, you know, um, I voiced that, you know, and also at the Getz Park too, so, good job, um, Mayor. I'm going to Councilman Baker.
All right, okay. Well, I just want to thank everybody for hanging there with us, um, expressing their thoughts and their concerns. Um, I was unable to attend the groundbreaking due to a weird work schedule, but, uh, I am glad to hear, uh, just of the new developments coming. Um, wanted to tell everybody about the Gleaners Distribution. Uh, it's the Gleaners Mobile Food Pantry. That's this Thursday, July twenty-third at nine thirty AM at the high school. Um, and just encourage everybody to, you know, I know people are still going through, uh, some of the ups and downs of this, uh, this COVID, uh, thing. Um, it impacted a lot of people, um, I would say most everyone. And, uh, if you're in a position to help someone, I would encourage to help, uh, your neighbor or whoever you're able to. Um, just do what you can, everybody. Just continue to be each other's brothers and sisters keeper, um, look out for one another, and do your part to stay safe. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, for, um, your service on Gleaners and making sure food is distributed throughout our community. Um, Councilman DeMonico.
Thanks. Um, yeah, for a couple of the residents here, I was trying to respond to them also. Um, I guess first, uh, just go with Mary Hall Rayford here in the Ethics Board. Uh, we could discuss it for like forty-five minutes on the phone. It, well, I thought it was somewhere half hour, forty-five minutes about, uh, who appoints people to the Ethics Board. I mean, so, uh, generally, you're, you're not going to be able to appoint just a, anything in general, a whole group of people that are one hundred percent, uh, you know, unbiased, because somebody has to appoint these people, you know, we can't, you know, random drawing or something like that's probably not a good idea. And if we have someone else appoint, you know, say someone from city administration or otherwise, they are also, you know, they also apply to the ethics ordinance. Everybody has to follow the ethics ordinance. So to me, it makes the most sense for the people that are elected by the people to be appointing the people to that ethics board. We each get one, so you really, there can't be any stacking, anything like that. And I, I think we discussed all those items, so I just wanted to make sure I, uh, mentioned those points. Um, and then the Nine Mile Construction, actually, I, I guess, uh, is doomed. Do you know, uh, if we could, uh, answer that real quick, what's going on in Nine Miles, DT Consumers, is that our DPW?
Ms. Dunn?
I think she's trying to, uh,
Okay.
unmute.
I see. Six people at the top being used, I don't see her part.
Okay, sorry. I'm looking for Mr. Abraham to give you a little bit more detail. I don't know if he's still with us. We may have lost him.
It's fiber optic cable.
What's that?
It's fiber optic cable.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know which company's putting it in, but.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Blum. As I say, other, other residents have asked me that too. Um, and then the lady about the trees, um, if you could, eh, um, email also the city manager, edoom@eastpointcity.org about the, uh, tree situation, I think, sorry, I didn't catch your name. Um, if you can do that, um, someone can respond to you. I don't think I had received that email from you. And yes, the beautification commission, if you find the board and commission app, uh, you could apply for that commission too. We do still have that commission, and there's eleven members to it. Um, and then just two quick items. Um, again, well, yeah, thanks, everyone, for joining, and, uh, I'm glad to see so many people still on at, uh, ten twenty PM, so thank you for being, uh, interested in the city. Sorry, it's such a long meeting, but thank you for sticking around. And I just want to say, everyone, please, please wear masks. Let's, let's try and kill this coronavirus. to say, everyone, please, please wear masks. Let's, let's try and kill this coronavirus. Um, it's just gonna be longer and longer if people, you know, aren't wearing masks. I know it was just a, uh, suggestion before, and now essentially it's a requirement. You could get fined. Let's just all follow it. Even say in the worst case scenario, it doesn't help at all. Oh, well, you wore a mask for a year or two while we've tried to, you know, get rid of a pandemic in our country. Um, so please, please just wear a mask. And also for voting this August, November, you know, however long we're in a pandemic, even after that, you know, vote by mail if you can, or drop it off at City Hall in our Dropbox, which if it is getting close to Election Day, I would recommend that. The post office will make sure to put a high priority on ballots. But the courts have said that if your ballot's not in by, uh, close of polls, 8 p.m. on Election Day, your, your ballot won't get counted. So if it's getting close, just drop it off at City Hall, um, and then, or just vote on Election Day, and you'll be all set. Uh, so that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the, uh, grand opening of the park Gets Park, uh, I'm excited that, that we're gonna have what Roxanna has now. And, and of course, our, our, our goal for the council and administration is to go to each park, um, and have playground equipment for the kids. If we can get that to every park, that would be great. Uh, Cardy was there, the mayor was there, and I were there. And please understand, when you say, well, where's the other people at? Uh, Sarah was out of town. Uh, Rob works on the weekend, so he couldn't be there. Uh, same thing for the cleanup Monday. Uh, we started from the police station. There were probably 30 or 35 people that went out and picked up a, a lot of trash in the city. May not gotten it all, but, um, what I liked about it so much is not what, not what we did, uh, is the fact that so many people came out. And, um, despite all of our warts, uh, I still love this city, and I still say, East Point, no better place to live. Uh, Cardy mentioned about wearing the mask. I would encourage, if you haven't been tested yet, um, to call the Macomb County, maybe somebody knows the exact title, but I, Macomb County Health Department, uh, they're giving, uh, tests for free in downtown Mount Clemens, and, um, no cost. It takes about four or five days to get the results, um, to find out if you're negative or positive. But I think it's really important to find out if you have that or not. Um, I too am excited. Uh, I looked at the, come over here, it said 30, 33 people were with us tonight, and that, that's exciting. And, um, I actually like it when somebody, uh, what were do I want, council? I like it when people give us this, give us the son of a gun. I kind of like that, because, you know, sometimes politicians sit up here and we try to slap ourselves on the back, and we can't do that. And we need to be set straight sometimes. And so I appreciate all of that. And, um, I wish I had conversations with all of you who spoke tonight, but, you know, we, we see the screen, and we see your name on it. And, um, but there are so many new people. And the only reason you're here is because you love this city. You know, there's a lot of good things on television, but you said, you know, I live in this city, and, and I want to be part of the city. And if I can't be on a board or commission right now, I can, I can listen and find out what they're doing. And if I don't like what they're saying or what they're doing, I'm gonna raise my hand, and, and Brian's gonna call on me. So God bless everybody and have a wonderful rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Um, you're short and sweet. I want to say thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to, um, all the residents who knew and old, who came and, um, listened to what we had to say. Uh, I apologize to some of the residents that seen how, uh, we may disagree, but I think, uh, with council, we all agree on what's best for the city. Now, how that's done, we might, it might be disagreements there, but we all want the same thing. It's just we might want to do it differently. And so, um, knowing, uh, council, uh, some of you, you know, they wouldn't be elected if you guys didn't think they were best for the job. So, and, uh, all of us are leaders, and, um, you know, I know I'm the mayor, but yeah, council, they're, they're part of this leader, this is a team, a leadership team. And so, um, and a part of a team is no I in team. And so, um, and I, and I thank, uh, the council for all of their opinions and, and bringing them forth. Um, like I said, we all agree, we all want the same thing, what's best for the city. It's, it's the disagreement we come to when we want to do it a different way. Um, just for instance, uh, Mr. Michael, uh, Councilman DeMonico talked about, he wants the streets done. All of us wants the streets done. It's just, it's certain ways you want to get it done. So we all have the same, um, uh, vision. We just want, everybody just have a different way of doing that. Uh, also, I want to thank everybody who was a part of the Aaron Park Project and Development, who was involved, who was able to get there, everybody who was a part of it. Um, those who wasn't able to come, who want to be a part of it. Uh, I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. Um, Gets Park, you know, um, Mayor Pro Tim is, uh, the liaison there. She has done a lot of work. And also, the Parks Commission has done a lot of work. Some of them, um, are on the line now, was able to be there, the, uh, Gets Park, the Plank Commission, the engineers, and everybody that helped move that project forward. I am so excited that even during a pandemic, we are developing, we are growing. Today, we have some, um, new businesses and new jobs coming to East Point. It's a lot of good things going on. We should be proud of our city. It's a lot of other cities that don't have new development going on, new housing projects, new, uh, playgrounds, people trying to invest in the city. People are losing, businesses are losing money. Um, people are losing jobs. And you come to East Point, you can get a house and a job. So, um, I'm happy to be a part of that. Also, um, I want to also thank the Public Safety Director for the cleanup, uh, that happened on Monday. I wasn't able to make it, um, um, that day, but usually I'm always there, me and my twin daughters, you know. So, um, and again, I thank, um, the councilman and, um, Curly for being there, and also Ms. Don and all the other directors that were there. I think, I believe Ms. Holman was there, and a lot of other stakeholders, and the residents from the Neighborhood Watch was there. So good job. Thank you. Um, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim. We need to do it more than once. Uh, every blue moon, we need to do it twice, you know. And, um, just, you know, just get out there and do it, even if it's not a day that we do it. I know, um, Councilman DeMonico works with the beautification. He has, um, done it a lot, you know. So, um, thank you for what you did on that as well. Also, uh, you heard that the deadline for the city council petitions were today, and we have three people. So, uh, I want to say thank you for stepping up, whoever gets the job. Um, thanks for stepping up and trying to be a part of this community as well. Um, I also have some good news. Each and every year, there's a mayor's challenge with the Wyland, uh, National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. And the mayor from St. Clair Shores talked about, um, the money that we spend to clean our water. And I'm excited about this, because if we sign up, uh, let me go to the details. They do it every year, and you are, uh, going against different, um, cities. So they have different population categories, 5,000 to 30,000, 30,000 to 100,000, 100,000 to 300,000, and so on and so forth. Uh, if we are selected, um, we are, uh, a grand prize of $3,000 goes toward home utility bills for residents. We get home irrigation kits, home improvements, store cards, gift cards, and a charity in our city gets a 2020 Toyota Highlander Hybrid for its organization. So I am so excited to take the pledge to keep the water clean and save water. Go to www.mywaterpledge.com. That is W-W-W. We have 30 participants, um, on here now, so that's 30 people who should be signing up right now as I talk. That's W-W-W. Have your kids, have your neighbors. I would like to see East Point win. This would be huge. They do it, um, all over, uh, the United States. So again, it's W-W-W dot my pla- mywaterpledge.com. That's W-W-W dot mywaterpledge.com. And I hope we are selected. It'll be used for, to bless a, um, a nonprofit in our community, and also help someone with their water bills, because a lot of people have been having utility problems during this pandemic. And, uh, I just want to say thank you again to everybody, those who were chosen on the Ethics Committee. Um, also, uh, again, thank you for stepping up, everybody for coming in and listening to what we have to say. And, um, we are going to close session for our city manager evaluation. So, um, council, you want to make a motion to go in closed session for a city manager evaluation?
Sure. I'll motion we go into closed session for a city manu- city manager evaluation.
Moved in support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
And those who are new to, um, the Zoom meeting, the closed session is when we go, um, behind the scenes and talk to our lawyer about cer- certain things. Um, and then we come back. It's an open session. So if some might leave, I mean, when we come back in from closed session, we're just gonna close off the, uh, council meeting. So, um, you're free to, uh, go. I mean, if you want to stay and hear me say adjournment, that's up to you. But again, thank you all for, um, I listen to every, um, I listen to every, uh, comment and concern. And when I get your emails, I forward it to the, to the right person as well. Um, and I do not reply to bullying. I do not reply to harassment, and I do not reply to any other such things that's disrespectful. So, saying that, um, motion is supported. Did you call the roll, Mr. Uh, Fairbrother?
I believe so.
I think we did. Okay. Well, that's going to closed session. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just get five minutes?
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
I need it too. Thanks.
Me too.
Fairbrother, uh, before you leave, Mr. Fairbrother, I think, um, I think you need to stop the recording off your account.
Okay, I will stop it right now.